Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council's special meeting. This is Thursday, May 12th. Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Hombdal.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. Okay, this is a little out of order, but that's what we'll do. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Bernie Fetterman.
It's my honor to pray tonight. Dear God and gracious God, the wisest man who ever lived was King Solomon, and when you asked him to ask for anything he wanted, Solomon did not waste any time in answering you. He didn't ask for a long life or riches, victory over his enemies. He simply prayed that you would give him wisdom and understanding, an understanding mind, to govern the great people under his care. This night will no doubt be filled with many questions, diverse viewpoints from various sides of the proposed Lompoc Valley Motorsports Park. Some will be spoken very passionately, but in it all, God, I simply ask that you provide all involved with the ability to listen for wisdom in the voices of those who speak, in the numbers, the options presented this night. And at the end of this meeting, may we continue to be good neighbors and grow in kindness toward each other. Great things have never been accomplished without the hard work and passion of people and wisdom on the part of leadership. So tonight, I ask you to provide wisdom for our mayor, our city council members, our city managers, and all who speak this night. I know our city leaders are desirous of doing what they believe to be the best thing for the great people that you have placed under their care. Each person has passion. Each person will believe that they are right, but what I pray for tonight are hearts to reason, the ability to listen, and to make wise choices which are the best choices even when two paths seem to be equal. I pray you will help everyone trust in the decisions that are made tonight and going forward. Keep everyone heart and mind and clear and emotions even. Make us all lovers of wisdom. We thank you for our wonderful community and the freedoms we enjoy, but allow all to be heard tonight who desire to speak. Thank you for various viewpoints. Bless our city. Watch over those who protect and watch over us in your gracious name and wise counsel, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, if I can remind everyone to silence or turn off your cell phones.
There are some empty seats up front for anybody that cares to have a place to sit and come forward.
This is your opportunity to speak to us for three minutes. If you have a comment you'd like to make specifically about anything on the agenda, you have three minutes to speak to us, so please come forward. Okay, why don't we just start lining up over here? If there's a bunch of people speaking, just line up over on the right-hand side, or your left, my right.
Okay. My name is Marcia Bryant. I'm 85 years old. We moved here in 1963 and raised our daughter here. This is, this whole situation you're talking about is ridiculous. Number one, you're going to drive the poor damn dogs in cages crazy since their hearing is 600 percent stronger than ours. You're going to end up, we'll end up losing the parachutes, the parachuters here. It's a mess. It's going to drive everyone crazy. In the long run or short run, in my case, it's not going to affect me. It's going to affect the neighborhood. We're going to have more traffic and more crashes on Central Avenue. Will there be alcohol allowed there? Are we going to have dump stations to provide sewage for all these RVs that are going to be here? Are they going to be here day and night? It's going to be a mess, and I'm really, really sad to see this happen to our town.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Howdy Spicer. I first visited this town in 1972, moved here in '74, and have loved it since then. But I've noticed one thing that's kind of going backwards. When I first moved here, Santa Maria and Lompoc were just about the same size, very, very close. Now I look at it, we're in the 40s, they're in the hundreds. It ends up, one of the basic things that used to happen here when I was doing construction stuff, they passed out a application for the city of Lompoc for funds for tourism projects. This is probably one of the best tourism projects you could get in this town, and I think it would more than that satisfactorily pay off anything as she was talking about, dump stations, everything else. It's a pay-feeling. It's good. It's a great thing to do, and we should have it. And like the noise, it'd be no different in that airplane in and out all the time. I can hear it clear up at my house in South Oakley's. But anyway, let's, I'm going to hand this to you guys so that you can look at it. It's an application for funds for tourism projects, and that's what the city used to give out. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. And as we get ready for the next speaker, I just want to remind everyone that we respect everyone's opinion, no matter what they have to say, so no cheering, jeering, applause. We'll just let them have their say. Next, please.
Are we going to reset the clock?
Yes.
Okay, good. My name is Michael Donahue, and I'm a new resident. My wife and I are.
Please address the council, sir.
What's that?
Address the council, please.
Oh, okay. It seems to me that the people are, this is about the people, actually, but we're new residents here to the Lompoc Valley, a beautiful place. And when we came here, we were really thrilled with the quality of life. We were unaware of this project. In fact, I think if we had known about this project, we probably would not have bought a home here because where we are, we're exposed to the sound, and I would have to differ with the gentleman that just spoke. The amount of sound that this will generate is a nuisance, and it's going to change the quality of our life. It's going to affect property values. And I find it interesting that the city would choose a project like this in such a pristine valley. If you go up and down the state of California, you won't find such a project anywhere that I know of. You wouldn't find it in Ventura, you wouldn't find it in Soreno Valley, you certainly wouldn't find it in Del Mar. You might find it in National City, but even then, I think it would be rare. We're sitting in a place that is so beautiful, and the idea that this is going to generate money is, that will offset any sorts of losses or property value losses, et cetera, I don't think is warranted or is believable. I don't know that we would want to continue to stay here, so I think that just the sound alone as a nuisance is something that we should all think about carefully. Also, it seems to me that the investment of money, something related to space, a Space and Earth Institute, something that brings UCSB, that brings Nobel laureates, that brings Caltech and JPL and NASA in here, that would be something that would generate a lot more interest, and actually commerce, because the people that come here are not going to root here. If you had professors from Caltech that were teaching at a Space and Earth Institute here, they would actually bring technology and IP that they would end up opening up commerce, places where they could actually generate products or ideas. This basically is people coming in and out, and what are they doing there? Essentially destroying our quality of life. So in my view, I just feel that this isn't a project that makes sense given the beauty, the really pristine beauty of this valley. So I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Ruth McKenna, and I just want to say that I truly feel that we need something for the whole family to participate in. I feel that there's not enough family activities for the whole family to do, and I've been volunteering out at the kids' park for the majority of the Saturdays since it's opened about three years ago. I've had parents tell me when I'm out at the park that they have to travel anywhere from one and a half hours up to three hours to go and ride their motorcycle or their motorized And so, I forgot where it was. Why should people from Santa Maria, Orquet, and Golita with the hopes of having people from Santa Barbara to drive over here instead of having to travel so far away to ride their motor vehicle? There are people getting tickets who ride in the riverbed and when they could be riding on our future track. There are no, not that they are going to drown out there due to our so-called El Niño, haha. With the car shows that happen in California, and once we can get past our EIR, our environmental impact review, I know that there's going to be money being poured into our track. And so that's why I feel that, you know, if we can just get through that, that would just really help, and I know that's kind of driving us down right now. I've had a handful of people who have traveled around and talked extensively to race car drivers and people that have some deep pockets that would gladly put money into our track. Thank you for listening and vote for motorsports.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Jane Fassold, and I live up on the Mesa Oaks area, right on the edge where all that noise and dust and dirt is just going to come right down through that valley and impact us up on that mesa. And we've got some of the most coveted properties in this area, those houses right there on the edge of the mesa. We are continually being asked if we're interested in selling because a real estate agent has somebody who would like to have a house on the edge of the mesa. And I just don't understand, you're putting it out in an area that's not only part of a floodplain, but you have houses backing to the north, to the east, and all of those houses are going to just be inundated with this noise and dust and pollution, and that's not even talking about the traffic. And it's like, what kind of people do you want to attract to Lompoc? People that are interested in learning about, like the other gentleman said, maybe something about the space projects? Or do we want some UHAs coming in and just, you know, running crazy, running there? I don't think the racetrack is going to stop the racing around on our streets. I think it's going to become worse. And to bring up a point, I have a neighbor, next door neighbor, who had two cars stolen out of their driveway just two weeks, three weeks ago. Both of their cars stolen out of their driveway. I mean, it's getting kind of bad, okay? We like our small town. We don't want to invite in all kinds of problems that the large, the growing towns are coming up with, all the murders that are in Santa Maria. We don't want to grow so large that we start having those problems here. And I just hope that, you know, people understand the problem. And I'd also like to say, I was very disappointed in the fact that you really had to look in the newspaper, Sunday's paper and yesterday's paper, for a little bitty article talking about this meeting. That I am very disappointed in, and I hope that you would give more notice, larger little articles in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There are still at least five seats up front here if anyone wants to come up and sit down. At least five, maybe six, so.
Good evening. My name is Ed Mandibles. I reside in the city. I've been a tenant out of the airport for about 39 years now, so I'm very cognizant of airport things. I'm here tonight to kind of urge the city not to obligate themselves any more than they already have. The extra money that's going to have to go into the EIR and ultimately a master plan according to the FAA is just one small part of this. You still have Fish and Game, you still have U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Department of Transportation, Army Corps of Engineers to go through that are going to have these similar requirements. The FAA is just one of these requirements. Some years ago, there was a proposal to do a golf course in this same area that the motorsports park is proposed to build, and it was completely denied. The environmentalists denied planting grass down there. I don't know how this would ever get by doing what's planned. From the very first time that Carl came to the Airport Commission and presented this project, we told him, I said, "Well, it's a nice project. I think there isn't anybody against having a facility like this. It's just where it's at, right near the airport. It's going to displace an aeronautical use with a non-aeronautical use, and that's partly why the FAA is really getting involved in this." There's other things, like, you know, yes, we don't want the dust and the dirt, and I sympathize with the homeowners with the noise elements. Also, there were two other presentations that were done by John Lynn at the Airport Commission meeting, and we said the same things to him. We appreciate your fundraising efforts, your organization, but I think it's going to be money that's going to be lost because I don't think it's going to ever get through all the environmental impacts that is proposed of this project. So I would urge you not to obligate any more money that doesn't have a solid future to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Julie Manicucci. I'm concerned with the money. The eight-page city staff report was very detailed. It had a lot of information, I appreciate. My concerns are, has city staff received clarification from the OHMVR as to whether or not funds from Phase Two can be moved to Phase One? If this does happen, how does taking funds allocated for a future phase to pay for the first phase impact the feasibility that there will be sufficient funds remaining to pay for the rest of the project? With regard to the risk of repayment, there's a 26 percent of total project cost that the grant requires a local match, and it says in, clearly in the city staff report, the city may have to repay any grant funds received as reimbursements for costs expended on the project if the project is not completed or if Phase One is not completed. My question is, how much money would this be approximately, and where would the city obtain the funds? Another excerpt is out of the city staff report, it says, "It is clear if the city stops processing the draft EIR at this point, any monies used for the grant must be repaid. If any repayment is required, then the MOU obligates the LVPRPF to cover that repayment." My question is, what happens if the LVPRPF cannot recover the repayment, I'm sorry, cannot cover the payment? Where does that money come from? And as far as future costs, there's a huge impact with the 7.1 acre Willow mitigation area. The impact is not even known, how much money that would cost if that has to be moved. From the report, the site is 7.1 acre Willow mitigation area for the city that needs to be addressed by LVPRPF if the project displaces it. The grant currently allocates $150,000 towards Willow mitigation, and this may not be sufficient. The 38-acre project will likely have to work through mitigation measures and pay impact fees for the project beyond the limited funds key, limited funds provided in the grant. While those are only two of many future costs, they are significant factors to plan for. My question is, how will the LVPRPF fund these additional costs? This is a city report that our city staff has presented, so I think these, I hope these are going to be addressed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do I just go ahead and start? Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Carol Redhead. I just moved here on Halloween in La Purismo Highlands, right up here across the street from the proposed park for dragsters, whatever, fast-moving vehicles. I would like to say that if this goes through, I'm going to move my house. I'm going to move. I'm not going to live across the street from that. I spent 25 years in West Covina in LA County. West Covina is kind of like halfway between the mountains and the ocean. In Azusa, right next to the mountains, they had a drag strip. When they had the drags, you could hear them in West Covina 30 miles away. I can imagine what it's going to be like having a bunch of fast-moving vehicles right across Highway H from me, plus all the dust. The prevailing wind goes right against all of our homes constantly, so we'll be getting all the dust, all the noise, all the pollution from cars at our homes, thus lowering our value of our homes. Plus, I think you may be taking out a really nice going concern of the skydiving and the airport. What are you thinking of? I think one of you still owns a park around here, right? And you're going to expand it over there. I just say people follow the money. That's what we look at in Orange County where I came from, follow the money. When people did that in the last election series, a lot of people got voted out of office. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. There are still several seats available up here if someone wants to sit down, at least
My name is Chuck Griffin, and I live up on the Bluffs area up there. And the first thing I thought about when I first heard about this motor park was, when I was a kid in LA, I lived not too far from Gilmore Stadium where they had midget auto races once or twice a week. And I still smell the gasoline and all the rest of the noise, the confusion, the dirt that was created by these weekly midget auto racing things. That's essentially what you're going to put in here. Lord knows we need help in spreading the word about how wonderful living in Lompoc is, but spreading the word about building a new racetrack is not going to draw the kind of people that will make our town continue to be the sylvan, beautiful place that it is. In addition to which, our property values are all going to be affected in a negative manner. I've been in real estate all my life, but I've seen this thing happen so often. So it's not going to do anything, I don't think it's going to do anything good for our town, and Lord knows it's up to you to see if you can't get it to move somewhere else. Why don't they try out there in the federal base, out in Vandenberg Air Force Base, and take it out there where nobody's, nobody cares what's happening out there as far as noise, dirt, et cetera, et cetera. So that's my feeling on the subject.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Bill Carlson. I have been a resident of Lompoc for nearly 30 years, and I think the last time I came in and addressed this council, three of the members were still on the council at that time, and I was begging for the council to give a small amount of money to continue having an adult literacy program at the Lompoc Library, and not a single person who's sitting up there now voted in favor of it. And everyone told me the reason was, that's just not in the, that's not the role of city government. Now, that may be debatable. I'm not here to debate that. But if you can't support adult literacy programs that have been at the library for 25 years, how can we have any conscience and give money to something like this that we don't know if it's going to be successful? We don't know what, how, if it's going to impact our community positively or negatively? And why is the city even involved here? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dan Petrie. It's a pleasure to be here in front of the board, and Mayor Lingle and Victor Vega, my friend. I've lived in Vandenberg Village since 1966. Obviously, I went to Cabrillo High School, and we've been talking about this park since I was in high school. I had a '69 rally sport Camaro that I put almost $20,000 in, and I never did get to race it in any local park. A lot of guys are in the same boat and feel the same way as I do, and eventually just got rid of it because I'm not going to drive to Bakersfield or, you know, LA or Frisco, you know? The other thing is, they put in the skating rink to give the kids something to do when I grew up. I went to Crestview, then Buena Vista, then Vandenberg Junior High, then Cabrillo, and then on to college. So I've been a member of this community for a long, long time, and I've seen a lot of things, and there's nothing to do for, you know, the kids. It's always been that way. And the skating rink came in, it helped for a while, maybe five, 10 years, gave us something to do. I remember going there when it opened. We were all excited. I'm sure a lot of yous out there were the same with me. I was around 18, 17. And the Spring Arts. Spring Arts was designed to give the colleges, I mean, the high schools, a chance to show their art, and the high schools were involved originally in that, and then, of course, the art went out of it. Now it's just become Spring Fest, which I'm involved with all that, as you know, the Flower Festival. But cut to the chase, all these guys you see back here are just some of the members that have, we all have cars we work on, and we want to show them, and we want to race them. And you see them at the car shows, and when you go to the car shows at Albertson's, are any of those guys have any bad attitudes? Are they bad people? Of course they're not. They're just car guys. We're all car guys. Cars have been around since the early 1900s, the 30s, you know, the 40s, there's always been car guys. Car guys are not bad people, you know, and women. So to assume that we're going to bring a criminal element in here is just not right. We're not. We're going to bring in other car people from all over the state, and they're going to help, you know, promote it. So if people wonder why I wore my Letterman jacket today, it's because I've been waiting since I was in high school for this to happen, and I graduated in 1977. So jokingly, and as far as the Space Shuttle, too, we're going to bring the Space Shuttle in here, if you remember, as far as working with the base and the government and all that. Well, something happened. I've heard never rumors of what happened. We've got all these hotels. That was for the Space Shuttle. I remember all that. I lived here all my life. So we've got all these hotels that need to be filled, and they would love to have the people come in from out of town for car races and stuff. And once again, it's not going to be 24 hours a day. It's only going to be, it might be only on weekends. It might only be from 10 to 3 on a Saturday and a Sunday. There's a noise ordinance at 10 o'clock. You can't be driving past 10 anyway, so. But is my time up? Okay, well, thanks, everybody, and thanks for hearing me, and that's what I got to say.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to remind all the speakers, you want to address the council?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, yeah. You want to address the council. We're the ones that are, need to hear what you have to say. You don't necessarily need to convince people in the audience, so thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Beth Bardo Baldacino, and I'm a native of Lompoc. My parents are both natives of Lompoc. And first, I would just like to say, I don't have a problem whatsoever with the idea of having a drag strip. I think it's a terrible location. My husband and I worked very hard. We went off to college, got our degrees, came back to live a nice life by our families. We worked very, very hard and recently bought a home in the Highlands. We searched for years for a home that would have a huge lot for our three children, ages three, five, and seven, so we could live outside most of the time. We bought a house with a big lot, and now to hear that there's going to be something like this going across the way, and we're going to hear it, we're going to hear it. And it doesn't make sense to me that it's only going to be on the weekends. That's when we're home. We work all through the week. That's when we're home, so we're going to be home just in time to hear it. I think we have a lot bigger fish to fry as far as our homeless problem and other problems. problems we're having in this town. It seems like we should be handling other issues versus this. I have no problem with the people associated with this. I have many friends that are for this. I just think there's other locations. There's Sweeney Road, there's out by Surf Beach, the whole, this is a valley. We have area all around us. Why do we need to do it in the location where our most valuable homes will be affected? People move from Santa Barbara, from San Ynez, from Gilton to come here to buy the homes in the Highlands, in Providence Landing, in Lanes End, and we're going to put something like a drag strip in that area? For somebody like me, I'm not the smartest person in the world, but it doesn't make sense. Doesn't make any sense to me. There's plenty of other locations to do that. I'm a business owner. My father was a business owner. We've been here our whole lives. I'm in support of anything that brings people to our town and money and revenue to our town. We need that. But it doesn't have to be right there. I think there's a million other things we could be doing, you know, around town. We could put that almost anywhere. That location doesn't make sense. It would decrease home values in the most valuable home area. I'm not looking forward to sitting out back on the weekends when I'm home with my husband and three children and hearing that. And we will hear it. There's no way around it. No way around it. We have a perimeter lot, which we worked very, very hard for and saved for years to have that lot. Makes no sense to me why we should have to give that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Megan Evans, and I, too, am a homeowner in the La Purismo Highlands. Prior to that, I was a homeowner in the Bluffs. So, this is an important cause to me because I love living up there. It's a beautiful place to live. I was born and raised in Lompoc. My husband also grew up in Lompoc. He went to Cabrillo. I went to Lompoc. It's the, you know, star-crossed lovers. We came together. And we both moved away. We both said we would never come back. And then, we had our beautiful children. I wanted my son up here with me, but he had other plans. And we lived in Vegas, and we both said to ourselves, we, this is not where we want to raise our children. And we both knew that this is where we wanted to come back to raise our family, and we felt so lucky that we both worked really hard, and we were able to purchase a home up in the Bluffs, and we outgrew it. And we just recently, in March, purchased a beautiful home on a perimeter lot just down the street from the Baldequino family, and it's gorgeous, and we love it. And our kids absolutely love walking outside in the backyard and seeing the airplanes fly by. We can watch the skydivers from our backyard. It is absolutely beautiful. And I completely agree that there is nothing wrong with the motorsports park. I have friends out in the audience today, and I support them 100%. What I don't support, though, is the location. Because my family and our home, that's where we want to live forever. We told our Realtor when we closed, this is our forever home. And it breaks my heart that it may not be our forever home if we can't enjoy it, if we can't enjoy our built-in barbecue and have friends over on the weekends because there's so much dust and debris. I suffer from asthma. I'm not going to be able to breathe outside if there's lots of, you know, all of these crazy things going on in the air. So, these are things that we have to think about and consider. I never in a million years considered myself to be a personality that would come speak before a council about something like this. But I do feel so strongly, not only for my family, but for all of the families that are struggling with this decision where their homes, not just the value, but the quality of life, is being brought into question. So, I really do consider, or ask you to consider, the location of this motorsports park because it really will affect so many families who worked so hard to stay in this valley and who really want their kids to grow up here and have such wonderful lives here, just like we did growing up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Ken Huff, and I'm representing the Santa Barbara County Action Network. We've been, for 14 years, a countywide nonprofit grassroots organization, working to help create sustainable communities. A part of sustainability is its livability, its clean air, its reasonable amount of quiet, a safe environment. So, we pay attention to land use planning. We look at what's done traditionally around the state, around the country. And nobody's building drag strips and motorsports parks in the city limits. They're generally well outside of town, so that you don't have the impacts that a lot of people are talking about tonight. I understand that later on, after you have your staff report about the financial aspect of this that you're going to have to wrestle with tonight, there's another chance for public comment. But I figure, as a countywide organization, we don't, you know, that's going to be your thing to deal with hundreds of thousands, or whatever it is, that you have to consider whether you want to spend that money to do this. But as a land use planner over my career, this is, it's not what you would want to do in a city limit. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Steve Treble, Lompoc resident. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. In previous council meetings, I have spoken of the shortcomings of the proposed drag strip motocross racing project, increased traffic congestion, noise pollution, and the depression of real estate values, just to name a few. Not to mention, you can enjoy most of these off-road activities just an hour north here at the Santa Maria Raceway and Pismo Beach Dunes. However, I also understand that not everyone here thinks this project will be a nuisance. But I do believe there's a position here that all Lompokians can agree on, the ability of the city to meet current and future financial obligations. So, tonight, I would like the council to really consider what it means financially to move forward with this drag strip and motocross project. The Foundation has been working on this project since 2010, and we have been told that this effort would cost the city nothing, that there was plenty of support from other sources, businesses, personal donations, charity events. However, fast forward six years, and the Foundation has only raised between $40,000 and $150,000, depending on who you ask. Six years fundraising for this park, less than $200,000, funding far below what is needed to complete, let alone sustain, this raceway. The point is that for a project that will likely cost millions of dollars, the Foundation has only been able to raise a minor fraction of the total project cost. This doesn't even count the ongoing annual operational costs needed to maintain this raceway. Today, we have already committed to this EIR to the tune of $200,000, $230,000, and now it looks like another $140,000 more will be needed. Luckily, the Foundation has provided a small portion of this funding, but even if this project is approved but not completed by the end of this year, the city is on the hook for the balance of the EIR costs. Supporters of the raceway continue to state that everything will be fine as long as the city is not grossly negligent. But I wonder, how could the city be grossly negligent if the EIR is done thoroughly and correct? In fact, I would say the city would be grossly negligent only if this council fast-tracked this project approval. Recently, we've seen the city turn down projects due to the unavailability of cash in hand, such as the new fire station facility. I ask the council to consider applying their fiscal policies across all projects. Support the same measure with this project as you did with the fire department facility you defeated. Require proof of funding before committing any city assets. You said we can't pay for a fire facility today? We won't be building one. If we can't pay for this raceway, then we shouldn't have approved plans to build it either. The heart of the raceway projects is in the right place, but the project, aside from its poor location choice, is not fiscally sound nor ready to be rushed forward. Losing the state grant with its strings attached is far better than obligating the city to millions of dollars in future obligations we just don't have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close all communication, bring it back to new business. Let's see, we'll have the Economic Development Director, Assistant City Manager, Teresa Gallivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Teresa Gallivan, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Manager. And we have a fairly detailed report in front of you to help you with the policy calls that need to be made tonight. So, I'm not going to go through the entire staff report, but we'll focus on some of the more important factors to consider, and I'm here for questions. Also here this evening to share valuable information with you is Joe Gibson from Meridian Consultants, and he is our environmental consultant. And he's going to talk to you about the timing of the environmental work and the process. We also have the Chair of the Lompoc Valley Parks and Recreation and Pool Foundation, who's going to share information with you on the economic impact of the project and the Foundation's ability to carry the project forward. So, the background in a nutshell, I think everybody here is very familiar with that. But in a nutshell, this project was proposed by the Lompoc Valley Parks and Recreation Pool Foundation to the city as a project that would be no cost to the city. The city received a state grant that would assist with this. So, that's the background, in short, on this project, and we've been working on it for several years, for many years. So, let me, let me clear up how we got here tonight to this special council meeting. In this process, we have had differing direction as to whether we would need to do an environmental assessment for NEPA, which is the National Environmental Protection Act. When our environmental consultant came on, they contacted the Federal Aviation Administration, and at that time, we're advised we did not need to do that. We were very recently in a discussion with the Federal Aviation Administration regarding the potential future lease of the airport property to the Foundation, which is part of the project. And it was made very clear to us at that time that NEPA would now be a requirement, that it would be a requirement, and that an amendment to the airport layout plan would be needed prior to the FAA approving any lease with the Foundation. So, city staff and our consultants gathered information on how to incorporate these processes, this additional work, into our timeline. And they came up with a plan to do that, albeit it is a tight timeline. But they have come up with a plan, and one that requires that we start work as quickly as next week or the week after that. So, that is why we are here at a special meeting. There is a time sensitivity, and the timeline is a very important factor for you to discuss this evening, and we're going to talk about it further in this presentation. So, with a plan for timing of the work in place, the next question to tackle is how do we fund this extra work or additional work? And that's why we're here tonight. That's really why we're here. The contract that we have between the city and the Foundation, we have a memorandum of understanding, which is a contract or an agreement that we made on how we would proceed with work. And that contract indicates that anything that is not paid for by the grant will be paid for by the Foundation. So, that's the agreement we're operating under. The Foundation does not have in hand today sufficient funds to pay for the additional work, which is estimated at $140,000. And that is an estimate, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Did bring in another $10,000 today, and that is good. And that brings the Foundation's contributions on deposit with the city up to $55,726. Currently, the grant we have does not have sufficient funding in Phase One to cover the additional environmental work. So, the grant doesn't have the funding currently, and the Foundation is fundraising, and they're going to talk more about that later, for their share. But in hand today, we still have to address the funding question. So, that is the other significant issue to focus on, timing and funding. So, there are a lot of unknowns that are in the staff report. And in order to help answer the funding and timing questions that we have and that you need to consider, we sent a lot of questions to the state about the grant we have. And at 2:00 today, the city attorney and I had a call with our state grant representative, and we received some clarification on several important points that were outlined in the staff report that will help us as we proceed with this discussion. We also asked for this clarification in writing, and while we had a phone conversation today, our state grant representative did indicate they will give us this, the responses to our questions in writing next week. So, that is forthcoming. And I should clarify for everybody that the state grant is divided into two phases. Phase One is the environmental work, and Phase Two is the construction work of the project. So, when I refer to phases, you'll know what I'm talking about. So, we asked the state if we could move funding from Phase Two, the construction phase, to Phase One in order to cover any of these additional costs. And they have let us know that we can indeed move funding from Phase Two to Phase One to cover the cost of SEQA and of NEPA, the costs that are not related to the drag strip. That will always be the Foundation's commitment. So, we also can move funding from Phase Two to Phase One to cover staff time related to processing SEQA and NEPA. And currently, SEQA, once you take out the drag strip portion of the project, is $225,586. And NEPA, we have a quote to do that work at $65,000. So, the grant can cover that. We need to make an official request to the state, tell them what money we want to move out of construction in order to cover those costs. We cannot use the grant to cover the airport layout plan that is required. And the airport layout plan is required in order for them to move forward and do the lease, in order for them to move forward and do NEPA. And again, Joe is going to talk about that. Joe Gibson, our consultant, is going to talk about that in more detail. We have, we have not received an actual quote yet on the airport layout plan. We received a very ballpark estimate from our consultant, from a consultant that we used in the past to do the last airport master plan. So, it is a very much a ballpark. We are waiting for a cost estimate. We expect that to come in in the next week. We were hoping to have it this week, but it looks like it'll be next week. So, that number is an estimate. I just want to make that clear. And we are looking to AE Comm, who did the airport, the previous airport master plan, thinking that because they have worked with us and they did our airport master plan in the past, that would be the most effective way to proceed. So, moving funds from Phase Two, the construction phase, to Phase One means that there will be significantly less funding in the future phase or for the construction phase. So, that is something to keep in mind. It does help us, though, continue with the environmental work that we're presented with in Phase One. The state also let us know that we can amend our grant performance period. Currently, the grant agreement that we have with the state indicates the performance period ends at the end of December, December 31, 2016. However, the state has let us know that if we send a formal request, we can extend our performance period, and they let us know that the recommended time would be in order for us to complete the, would be about March 1, 2017. So, we'd need to request an extension of the performance to March 1, 2017, and that is so there is adequate time for the city and the state to process all the paperwork for the reimbursements and close this out before the grant funds vanish on July 1, 2017, because then they are gone, and there is nothing, nothing for us to submit for. So, that is good news in that it gives us a little more room than we thought on the timing of the work that needs to be conducted. The state also clarified a couple questions regarding the risk of repayment of the grant. So, if the environmental impact report is completed and certified, and it states that there is a significant finding, and the council decides not to proceed, and we don't issue a statement of overriding concern, so something in there, the council decides we don't want to proceed because of something in the document, but we've completed it and certify it, then the city would not have to repay the grant funds to complete that phase. So, if the EIR is completed and it comes out okay, or meaning there's no problematic mitigation measures, and the council changes its mind and decides not to proceed, then we would have to repay the grant funds. So, if there's a good faith effort, and we move, and we get the EIR, we get it done, we get it certified, and there's a good faith effort, then we would not have to repay the grant funds. The state also confirmed that the city may apply some of its staff time to the match for SEQA and NEPA. So, there's a little more to come on that match. That's, turns out to be a bit of an interesting number. So, more on that to come. So, overall, this is good news as far as the goal of completing Phase One and the environmental work. work. It still does present some challenges for Phase 2, as it moves significant funding out of that phase. That would be, and that will need, that gap would need to be filled in some other way. And currently, the MOU that we have with the foundation and the city says that anything that's not covered by the grant is paid for by the foundation. So, um, let's see. So I'd like to go ahead and then get in a little deeper detail with our environmental process and that timeline. So I'd like to introduce Joe Gibson to give you insight into that process. Thank you. And then I'll come back.
Thank you, Teresa, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Joe Gibson. I'm the managing partner with Meridian Consultants. We are the city's environmental consultant on this project. We've been working with the city for several months now, since late 2015, on completing the EIR under SEQA for the motorsports project. And as we talk here tonight, let me just give a little bit of SEQA and NEPA 101. SEQA is the state environmental law that we follow. The motorsports project is subject to SEQA. NEPA is the Federal Environmental Policy Act. The airport and FAA are subject to NEPA. The motorsports park by itself is not subject to NEPA. So by hence, we're not doing a joint SEQA-NEPA process. We've got two separate processes. The SEQA process is almost to the point to where, working with staff, the environmental report for that could be released here fairly shortly. The schedule for that work is to have the environmental report released, have the comment period start, and be able to bring that back to the council probably by the fall, September of this year. We're on schedule to meet that, and we see no problems with doing that. As staff indicated, the NEPA process is something that, in our initial consultations with FAA, they indicated they may have some review requirements, given the location of the park and some of the airspace restriction zones that are located around the airport. But at that point in time, they did not indicate to us that there would be a need to have any federal approvals of the motorsports park project. In subsequent discussions between city staff and FAA, as staff has indicated, FAA has indicated that, no, they do need to have an update to the airport layout plan that shows the motorsports project on it, because it now becomes a non-aeronautic use on properties that are within the airport parcel proper. So to do that, then, we have to also do an environmental assessment subject to NEPA. An environmental assessment is not an EIS. An environmental assessment is a, a, a shorter, briefer document that allows the environmental considerations to be heard and evaluated by the federal agency that is the lead on this, this case, it would be FAA, to make a decision of whether or not they would find there is a, could, could they make a determination of what's called a finding of no significant impact, or a FONZI? If they can make that finding of no significant impact, then the environmental assessment is fine. In our discussions with FAA, they feel very confident that, given what they know about the project right now, and we've had fairly detailed discussions with them, that NEA is the appropriate document to proceed with. I'm sure everybody gets concerned about when it comes to schedules on federal environmental documents, and some can take many, many years to complete. Fortunately, in an EA process, and the fact that we've already started the SEQA process and have already completed the bulk of the environmental technical work that needs to be done, much of that is transferable into the environmental assessment. Our schedule to do the environmental assessment is also predicated on the ability of AECom to complete the airport layout plan. As with SEQA, NEPA requires that you have an action or a project to be considered. You just don't do NEPA to do NEPA. You wouldn't do SEQA to do SEQA. As I stated before, the project being considered under SEQA is the motorsports park. The project that would be considered under NEPA would be the update to the airport layout plan that would then include the motorsports park as a component of the airport layout plan. In doing so, the NEPA document would look at the entire airport proper, all the existing uses on the airport property, as well as the uses that are proposed as far as the motor park. Now, the fact that the city's already done an update of its airport layout plan a few years ago, most of the proposed uses and everything else for the airport proper, well-known or well-in-progress. So there's really no unknown information to process from the airport standpoint. It just needs to be included into the document, because we're doing a NEPA document on the airport layout plan. To do that work and get the, the environmental SEQA document repackaged in a format that would be acceptable to a federal agency, as FAA would be lead, would take about three months on our part. FAA would probably take about a month or so to review that. That document then is subject to a 30-day public review period, which would probably occur about September, okay? At that point in time, FAA would then, as in the environmental process for SEQA, respond to any comments, and then make their determination as to whether they could issue a FONZI on the project or not. Once the FONZI is issued, FAA can then give conditional approval to the airport layout plan, which is the project under consideration. With the conditional approval and the FONZI, the, the FAA then can allow any action that needs to proceed on the lease agreement to occur. And that almost becomes ministerial at that point in time, and does not require any further actions. To complete the NEPA process, to complete the airport layout plan, to get it in a state that is acceptable to FAA, such that the environmental assessment can be released for public review, will take us at about three to four months. At that point in time, we're then into the review and finalization, or it would be within the schedule to have the FONZI issued probably before December 31 of this year. So that's the schedule that we're looking at with regards to completing the NEPA projects. I'd be glad, glad to answer any questions on that.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I have.
I just have a couple more things to.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
If that's acceptable. So to, the other thing that needs to be considered tonight, in addition to the timing, is the, the risk of repayment. And to date, the city has paid $178,267. The foundation, as I mentioned, has deposited $55,726. So there is already city exposure on this project. The grant, now we know, will reimburse all the work related to SEQA and NEPA, except the portion attributed to the drag strip, which is $9,640, depending on, yeah, $9,640. I gotta back out the ALP on that, actually. It's a little less if we back out the ALP. The ALP, which is estimated at $75,000, and then the match, the 26% match. Today, when we were discussing the questions we had with the state, we learned that the match is calculated a little bit differently than the way we understood it. We understood it to be 26% of total project costs. The state shared with us today that the match is actually total project costs plus your 26% local match, and then you calculate the 26% match from that number. So it's a moving target, because it's the 26%, as we continue to have costs of staff time and such, continues to go up. But it's approximately, after we got some more clarification from the state on how they go about this calculation, which they plug into a formula they have in their computer, it looks to be about 27.88%, as opposed to 26%. So it's a little higher than the numbers in my, in the staff report, and that is something that we need to get further clarification on, especially what, what part of staff time could be applied to that, and which part we need to make sure is covered in other ways. But in any case, we know that the 20, the city's exposure, if the grant takes, if we complete Phase 1, the grant takes care of all the things I've told you the grant will take care of, then the foundation's contribution will be the 2.6% to the drag strip, the airport layout plan update, and the matching local match, to the extent that we might be able to help with some staff time to be determined, with more questions to the state. So I wanted to share that with you. And as we mentioned, if Phase 1 is not completed, then any funds that were expended would need, and reimbursed by the state, would need to be repaid by the city. However, the MOU that we currently have with the foundation says the foundation will cover those costs and make the city whole. That's currently how it's written. The total cost for Phase 1 has increased with this additional work and is now estimated at $387,672. So if the foundation does not have adequate funds to cover the remaining portion of its costs that the grant won't cover, or if we had to repay those funds and the foundation didn't have the, the funds to repay the funds and make us whole, then it is the city's responsibility. However, we have learned that the foundation's costs that they would need to cover are now different than what they were before. The airport land use layout plan, the 2.6% to the drag strip, and then the 26 or 27.88% match. If the council wanted to proceed in that manner with these, this new information, then there would be some amendments that would need to be made to the MOU, and there already are some things that we think we need to amend in the MOU as far as timing. But those are some things that we wanted to share with you. And there's one other thing I wanted to just emphasize in regard to the timeline that Mr. Gibson presented. We are, do have to work with other agencies in this process, and so there is some timing of interaction with SHIPBO and Fish and Wildlife, state and federal, that we would need to take into consideration. And while they have worked that into the timeline, and we have been, they have, they understand that these folks are going, and these agencies are going to work cooperatively with us. It is something outside of our control, these agencies, and sometimes that is a factor that, you know, it's out of our control and does affect the timing, which is already tight. So this extra couple of months that the state has said we could ask for in our performance agreement could very well be taken up with this phase. So with that, I'd like to, unless the council has questions at this point, Mr. Mayor, do you, we'd also have the foundation chair.
Sure. Just a quick question for you, unless any of the council members have any questions. So we've learned tonight that we, we will be allowed to use Phase 2 money in Phase 1 to complete NEPA and SEQA.
Correct.
Okay. If we use Phase 2 money, and there's some mitigating circumstances that we choose not to go forward, are we responsible then for the Phase 2 money, the same way we're responsible for the Phase 1, or is it treated differently?
No, it, it gets moved into Phase 1 and is part of Phase 1. So as long as we certify the EIR, and then we would be reimbursed for money used towards the environmental work.
Right. That's if we certify the EIR. If we do not certify the EIR, there's.
If we don't finish Phase 1.
Well, no, we'll finish, let's say we finish Phase 1, okay? We use Phase 2 money to, to finish it, okay? But there are circumstances that cause us not to move forward with the project, okay? If we only use Phase 1 money, the state grant will cover their portion of it, the foundation will cover the other portion of Phase 1 money. What about Phase 2 money that has been brought into Phase 1?
The Phase 2 money will then be considered Phase 1 money. We're, we're moving it over to Phase 1, and it's now a Phase 1 allocation. Phase 1 is all the environmental work, so the money will be treated as if it's, because it now will be Phase 1 money.
Okay. So Phase 2 money does actually become Phase 1 money, then?
Yes. The, it means there will be less money for Phase 2, that much less. Also, I think the question of, if we don't certify the EIR, do you or Joe want to talk about what, why would, a scenario we would do that?
I'm, I'm not sure why the, the city council would go through the process of having the EIR prepared and then not end up certifying it. But if you did do that, for some reason, you would have to pay back the grant money that was taken.
Okay, thank you. So Councilman Vega.
Teresa, as we move along to Phase 2, we're focusing just on Phase 1, but we should look down the line to see what other timeframes and other repercussions we have on Phase 2. So basically, we're using our construction money, they're using their construction money to get through the SEQA and the NEPA and whatever process here, correct? I mean, is there any repercussions? What are their timeframes on Phase 2 for construction once we get past? Is it open-ended? Do we have any guarantees of anything being repaid once we come out short on Phase 2? Okay? Basically, we have a construction now, construction that needs to take place with other mitigation, and I'm not sure if mitigation is included in these costs, because Phase 2, is there any other mitigation that has to go through on Phase 2 also? We're just looking at Phase 1, so that would be.
Sure. Let me talk about that a little bit. So, right, we've been talking about Phase 1, because we, if we get through Phase 1 and complete it, there's a certain risk factor that we've all discussed here. We would need to come back to council before deciding on going to Phase 2 and have a discussion. And the discussion also would, the state would also need to make a determination on allowing us to proceed to Phase 2 as well. I think the timing would be a big part of that discussion, because as it is, we're just finishing the environmental phase at the end of December, if everything goes according to the timeline. And as we mentioned, there are agencies that we're, be working with, that, you know, sometimes these things, we hit a hiccup, or some, something takes a little longer. So the timing of Phase 2 is something that would have to be discussed before we proceeded to that, and the focus really is on Phase 1 for that purpose. Because if we start Phase 2 and don't finish the construction, then we would have to repay those funds. Also, Phase 2, you asked about what is available in Phase 2. Everything that we move out of Phase 2 into Phase 1 means there's less money for Phase 2. So, you know, there's some decisions that have to be made about what type of funding we move over. Also, in Phase 2, there is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gibson, but in Phase 2, there would be any mitigation measures that need to be met prior to Phase 2? No, in Phase 2. Okay, in Phase 2. Those mitigation measures, we don't know what they are at this point. We have to go through the whole EIR process in order to really understand what they are. However, there may be some costs attributed to them. We know the city has 7.1 acres of willow mitigation on this project site that has to be dealt with. If, if it had to be relocated, that's, that's something to take into consideration. We, we don't know about those ifs, and I, you know, don't want to go any speculate much on that, but there are measures that come out of the EIR.
Now, these costs, they come up, because they're unknowns right now, they could be quite high again, right? And what would we do to cover any mitigating circumstances on repairs, right? That's where it's going to come back to the council, and we get another, another shot at it to see whether we want to move forward or not? Is that what we're doing?
I would recommend that we would come back before, moving on to the next phase. Completing Phase 1 is our immediate discussion point and decision point. Also, Phase 2, yes, we don't know what those are until we get through the environmental process, what those costs would be. There's a certain amount that is in the grant, that is all there is. Everything else, according to our agreement with the foundation, the city's agreement with the foundation, anything not covered in the grant is covered by the foundation.
One more question here. The $178,000, I believe, that you said were, the city has expended already? Is that correct?
Minus the $55,000.
Minus the $55,000, so that's basically what we're on the hook for right now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, might as well say it, if it didn't move forward tonight, the city would be out that amount of money. Is that correct?
Yes.
Automatically. There's nothing else, there's no other, whatever we're doing here, it's just a loss without moving forward. But basically, if we moved forward. it's just a loss without moving forward. But basically, if we moved forward, we also could be opening up another can of worms also. Is that correct? As far as if these people didn't have enough money, if this, the motorsports, I'm just making this up here so we can see where we're going. If we run into a situation where they run out of money, or they can't, their fundraising doesn't measure up, and where are we at then, okay? Are we going to be open for requests, or are there any guarantees that, do we have a guarantee right now for the money that's been expended from the city to the motorsports right now, which is the 178,000 minus the 55,000? Has someone guaranteed that money? Because I believe they said that the motorsports had guaranteed that amount of money, that they'd repay it if something happened.
Yes. Yes. Right now, the MOU indicates they will pay the 50 percent of SEQA, which is $108,000, I could get my report, $1,000. And then anything that we did have to repay, or that we're out of pocket, would be covered as well.
And how much was that now, that, after the math there that you used?
$123.
We would be at $123. Is that correct?
But the way the MOU is written, the foundation would make the city whole on that. Although we don't have all of that in hand at the moment, it is in the MOU.
Thank you.
Councilman Starbuck?
Yeah, you kind of glanced over that there's going to have to be several amendments or a couple of amendments to the MOU. What would those be?
I think we need to update the timeline in the MOU and the commitments on what the state is going to cover and what the foundation is now going to cover, and the timing.
Okay, anyone else from the council?
I got it, I got it. I'll get my jug out of there.
Oh, yeah, okay. Councilman Humble.
One of the questions I have, and we were talking about all the funds and such, what is the impact on staff of the city? And how many people we have working, and do we have the staff to do that job, plus what we need to get done with inside the city? And I think that's a concern I have, is that if we don't have staff doing what we want inside the city, and it's out there, then where's that money going to come from? We have to hire more staff.
The, this has been part of our, our project, in our project pipeline for quite some time. So we have staffed up to handle the, the projects that are in the process right now. And the funding from the state has indicated we can move money to pay for the staff time costs associated with the environmental work. Phase Two would be a very different, a different story. We'd have to, we'd have to look at that when we get there and see what the critical funding is to, for that. But we'll focus on Phase One.
Not, no, you'll have public comment later. Okay, Councilman Starbuck?
You mentioned earlier also that there's going to be a little over seven acres of willow mitigation. Where did this come from?
The city did an airport runway extension some time ago, and that was a requirement of that project.
The extension of the runway, then?
The extension of the runway caused the city to have to do willow mitigation on 7.1 acres. The site that was chosen and approved for that mitigation is in the middle of the project.
Okay. So who's on the hook to pay for that mitigation at this point, then? Is that going to be the foundation, or the airport, the city?
That mitigation is the airport's mitigation. However, if the project displaces the current site, then that becomes a responsibility of the project.
So this is money that's not even included in here yet, is the cost of the mitigation for the willows and whatever other mitigations may be required. So we have several unidentified figures out here for mitigation right now that could possibly affect the foundation.
The EIR process will let us know what other mitigation measures there are, but the one that we know about is one that was identified when we did the airport extension runway, and that's the 7.1 acres.
Now, at that point, if all of a sudden the foundation says, you know, we just can't come up with the money to meet these mitigations, would this be considered an overriding circumstance, and we could cease the project at that point?
My understanding is if we've certified the EIR and the mitigation measures are such that they cannot be overcome, then we don't have to proceed, and we would not have to repay the funding.
Councilwoman Mosby?
Do you know what the state of the willow mitigation ground is currently, right now? I mean, the, the project that was out there was planted, what, seven, eight years ago, right? What is the condition of it?
My understanding is that the willow mitigation was not successful.
Right. And is, is there money in a fund that's set aside for it to be done again, redone somewhere?
There is funding set aside if indeed we need to redo it. There is not a different location identified to do that. And the city's location, approved location, is that location. So if the project wants to use that location and we, they can't coexist, that is a factor to be handled.
Currently, right now, the city's on the hook, though, for replanting the willow mitigation.
I would rather us not be so specific, saying we're on the hook, because we've, we've, actually, the city has done what the mitigation measure said. The mitigation measure was find a space and plant some trees. We did that twice, apparently. And by nature, the trees didn't make it. I'm not sure that that makes us, as a city, still have to go plant more trees. So I don't want us to take the position that, yes, we have to plant those trees. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. Seems to me reasonable that twice is enough, three times isn't necessary, but that's for a different time. However, if we do have that obligation, where we planned on doing it is in the 7.1 acres, and if it's displaced, there's still the money to plant the trees, we just need a new place to plant them. And that wouldn't be a responsibility of the city. That would be for this project.
Yeah, I was just getting at it, because it sounded like this willow mitigation ground is some pristine bug and bunny habitat that's sitting out there, but it's actually a double time, okay, so just, because it kind of sounds like you got this going on, but it's not, right? There's a, I guess I can't go in depth on hooks or not hooks.
Okay, now we're going to hear from the foundation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. John Lynn, Chairman of Lompoc Valley Parks Recreation and Pool Foundation. Carl Creel, Motorsports Chairman, and somewhere out there, Will Skyler, coming this way, Vice Chairman. I have a PowerPoint tonight to share with you, but I want to talk about a couple of things first. There are a lot of questions that were asked by the audience tonight that are covered by the Environmental Impact Report, and it would have been awfully nice if it had been available a week ago, but it's on schedule for next week, and that's when it's going to come out. And the Environmental Impact Report will answer a lot of questions the public has asked. Specifically, it'll talk about noise impact, it'll talk about traffic impact, biological impact, cultural impact, dust mitigation, traffic impact, and much, much more. Tonight, we really need to focus, as the staff has outlined, on the NEPA, the airport layout plan, and what the grant will pay for, and what the city liability, if any, will be under the grant. The city holds about $70,000 for that failed, twice failed, willow mitigation at the airport. And we have spoken in the past about working on a shared agreement with the city so that the foundation would participate in doing that mitigation elsewhere if need to be, and to minimize the amount of, that had to be spent out of that $70,000 so the city could retain some funds. Currently, the skydive landing area is actually in the middle of that willow mitigation area. So part of that, you know, the, as I said, it just didn't grow. Somebody said to me the other day, willows will grow where willows will grow, and if you put them somewhere else, they'll die. So now, if we could fire up the PowerPoint, please? So just a quick discussion of the timeline. It's in the staff report, but I'm sure some of you didn't have the opportunity to see the staff report, so I wanted to cover the key points. In August of 2008, the Parks and Rec Foundation was formed, and in 2010, the Motorsports Committee formed. In 2012, RINCON consultants estimated the environmental review cost to the city at about $70,000. In 2012, the Motorsports Committee presented to the council, and the council directed staff to move forward with the MOU. In February of 2013, the council approved the MOU for the Kids Fun Park at River Park, and in March of 2014, the city submitted the grant to the state parks. And the reason that it happened that way was that by completing the fun park, it provided additional points in the city for the grant, which allowed them to win the grant. In July, the state grant was awarded to the city for about $998,000. In October, November of 2013, the council approved the MOU that the staff was directed to prepare back on 6/2 of 12. On 1/4 of 14, the grant period began. On 3/4 of 14, the MOU was signed by the foundation and the city, which unfortunately does not correspond very well to the grant because they were written at different times. And frankly, our understanding of the, how the grant works has changed as we've gone along. This would be the first time the city has dealt with one of these grants and the foundation, so there's been a little confusion along the way. In 10 of 15, the council provided the foundation with additional time to raise the match funds for the project. On 12/31 of 15, or 16, I'm sorry, the grant ends. But the grant can be extended all the way to March 30th of 2017. However, the city would need to file all reimbursement documents no later than April 15th of 2017, and the drop dead date to file any documents that were not included would be May 2nd, 2017. The mayor and community members have expressed concern. Oh, you know what? I'm supposed to give you guys copies of this? We'll pause 10 seconds. Sorry about that.
Just for the public, that's copies of what you're seeing on the screen.
The mayor and some community members have expressed concern that the foundation committee may not be able to raise the funds. Here's a review of successful foundation projects and fundraising, building parks and amenities for the city. And realize that we build these parks, the land is handed over to the foundation, we build the park, and at the end, we give the city back the completed project. So in 2009, the first project was the Barkin Park. We had about $27,000 in cash and about $75,000 in donated materials and labor. The city put in about $9,000, and the finished value of the park was about $250,000. About the same time, Bulton was building a smaller dirt dog park for $175,000. Ours is grass. In 2012, nine holes were added to the disc golf cars at Beatty Park, and you can see that in the end, we did it with a lot of donated materials, $1,000 in cash, and $3,500 in, I forget what impact fee it was, that had been in the city coffers for so long, nobody could even remember what it was for. And that park had an end value of about $20,000. In 2013, we built the Kids Moto Fun Park in three days to help the city with the grant. We spent about $4,000 in cash, and we had about $15,000 in donations in kind of labor and materials. The city provided a dump truck to move two loads of gravel for about $300. There's really no end value for that park because it's temporary, and it'll be taken down when the large park is opened. Next, our largest project completed to date is the Riverbend Bike Skills Park. For that, more than $150,000 in cash was raised, more than $450,000 in donated labor and materials, and the city put in about $5,000 for a waterline. The end value of that park is about $900,000. Now we come to the Motorsports Park, which is actually a little smaller project than the Bike Skills Park. We'll need about $161, we raised about $161,000, and we'll need to raise about another $43,000. If the whole grant is used, it would be $998,107. And the donated labor and materials will be on the far side of $251,000. The finished park that we will give to the city will be worth about $1.8 million. The other project we currently have underway in the fundraising is the Fallen Warriors Memorial, which will be at Beatty Park. To date, the committee has raised $65,000. They have the red, white, and blue banquet later this month. I encourage any of you that have not purchased a ticket to do so, and come and have some fun with us. So they have about $40,000 left to raise. They estimate their cash cost at about $105,000, and their donated labor and material cost at about $150,000. And in the end, it'll be about a $350,000 value to the city, the finished park. So now, let's talk about what the Motorsports Committee has done over the five years, the past five years. You'll notice, looking at this chart, that the fundraising was very small at first, and then in 2013, we had to up the game because of the costs of operating the Kids Moto Fun Park. And each year since then, the amount of money donated has increased as we, as we grow closer to the project. There's a great deal of conflicting information in the staff report, and frankly, in the minds of the, of the foundation, about what the grant can pay for. So today, I sent a spreadsheet to Sixto Fernandez at State Parks, and he called me with corrected numbers, which are on the next slide. And they have a little thing called a grant calculator, and they put numbers into it, and then it tells you what the match is. And so Teresa thought it was about 27 and a half percent, I think it's more like 30. Because I gave Sixto the SEQA and the NEPA amounts, and the total of $260, or $296,580, and he determined that the grant match would be $104,204, and we have the $6,000 for the drag strip, so about $110,204. Next, the city has an opportunity to draw on a portion of the grant that's kind of just for general use by the city. It's not described in what that is specifically for. And that is 15 percent of the money expended in the grant phase. So if $296,589 were expended, 15 percent would be $44,500. Again, using Sixto and the grant calculator, the match would be about $15,454, and the 2.6 percent for the drag strip would add $1,157, so we'd be at $16,611. That would be the match. And again, these are state parks figures, not mine. So for the SEQA NEPA and the city indirect expense, the foundation would need to provide about $126,815. And there's a slide missing. To date, we have pledged a little over $118,000, so we would need to increase our pledge by about $8,000 to balance this out, which we're prepared to do. Now, the question of the airport layout plan. And the difficulty here is because this all came on pretty quickly, there are more questions than answers. The one thing we know for sure is that the state grant funds cannot be used under any circumstances for the airport layout plan. The initial proposal from Riddings Consulting, or the revised proposal for professional services dated September 24th, 2015, showed the Lompoc Airport Layout Plan Update as optional, and a cost ranging from $5,000 to $30,000. And I'm pretty sure that was a ballpark estimate. The current ballpark estimate from AECOM, who did the current airport master plan, is $75,000 because we asked them to come up with a number without giving them time to really develop the costs involved. really develop the costs involved. So I guess it would be safe to assume that somewhere between $30 and $75,000 is the cost of the airport layout plan update. I think we would all agree that before the council consider alternatives for the airport layout plan, the staff needs to obtain exact estimates for the cost for the ALP and the timeline for completion. Because of the short timeline now required for NEPA and the ALP studies, it's possible that the construction portion of the grant may not be able to be used. And we've actually known this all along, because if we got down to the end of the environmental process, and it was certified, and litigation began, we would not be able to access the second part of the grant. The foundation is confident that with a complete environmental document, the motocross portion of the Motorsports Park will be built in a short time. And as I pointed out earlier, compared to the Riverbend Bike Skills Park, the cost to construct the motocross portion is substantially lower than the funds raised and material donated recently for the Riverbend Bike Skills Park. So again, we're not concerned if we can't access the second part of the grant. We don't want to put the city at risk if there's any possibility, and that's just not an issue for us. Remember that the foundation wanted to use TWE Consulting for the environmental work? TWD does all the environmental review for State Parks grants. However, the city assisted on Meridian, and to save 60 days of going out for a request for proposal, which we didn't have, the foundation accepted Meridian. Realize that when this is all done, TWI will go through the entire environmental document to be sure that it meets state grant guidelines. That is not charged to the grant. City staff and Meridian handled the discussions with the FAA that led to the misunderstanding regarding NEPA and the airport layout plan. The foundation had no input in that. So now let's talk about some good news, because we've been hearing about all the stress and difficult things that are coming our way. The Motorsports Park will have thousands of participants and spectators each year. The largest number will be from the Lompoc Valley. The next slide shows the economic impact for hotels and restaurants in the first and fifth year, as well as the TOT, the transient occupancy tax or bed tax that the city will receive. The drag strip is not expected to be completed before the fourth year, so it's not shown in the first year numbers. And these numbers are drawn from similar events that were put on at the Santa Maria Fairgrounds for about four years. So the guests for one-day events in year one will be about 59,000 between spectators and participants. By year five, that'll grow to about 103,000. The guests for two-day events in the first year will be about 12,000, and by year five, about 38,000. Typically, about 25% of the guests to an event stay in hotels, so about 14,009 for year one, and about 25,750 for year two. Two-day events bring a larger percentage of guests to the hotels and motels, about 50%, so 4150 in year one, and 19160. So the room rentals for motels are about 20,000 in year one and 63,000 in year five. The average daily room rental rate in Lompoc is about $85,000. However, we would expect it to go up on weekends as the hotels are full. Year one, the hotels and motels will have enough vacancies to cover the demand, and it will generate about $162,000 for the city of Lompoc in TOT, plus an unknown amount of sales tax. We could not quantify that anywhere. By year five, it'll generate about $543,000 for hotels and motels if we had enough rooms, which we do not. The Hilton Garden Inn is not included in these calculations because it was not started when we did this work. Five-year TOT revenues to the city would be about $1,700,000 less any shortage of rooms, so probably $1,500,000 roughly. With regard to the economic impact calculation, the economic impact for the Motorsports Park will be the most significant increase in tourism in Lompoc in decades. Working with Explorer Lompoc, the foundation Motorsports Committee will maximize the positive economic impact on Lompoc. So where do we go from here? There are a large number of variables in moving the Motorsports Park forward that we do need to have answers to. In fact, ever since the staff report was completed yesterday, a number of changes have occurred with State Parks and the city's understanding of the grant, and the foundation's understanding of the grant. Changes since the start of the project. This is a large and complex project, and many things have changed in the process of moving the Motorsports project forward. Today, the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, between the city and the foundation does not match the terms of the grant. To eliminate confusion for the city staff and the foundation, the MOU must be updated to match the grant. Today, the foundation Motorsports and Motorsports Committee asks the council to take three steps, and these are to move the project forward to the end of the environmental quality, which will prevent the city from being at risk for chargebacks. And remember that the city is only at risk for chargebacks if they default on the grant. There is nothing that the foundation can do to cause the city to default. Number one, authorize the staff to enter an agreement with Meridian Consulting to begin the NEPA work immediately, not to exceed $65,000. Number two, to try to straighten out all these convoluted issues that we have, we would ask that the council form an ad hoc committee of two council members to meet with State Parks, city staff, foundation representatives, to amend the MOU to match the grant, and settle any remaining issues. And number three, and I know the staff's already doing this, direct the staff to obtain an exact price for the ALP and return to the council for authorization. Now, there are a lot of people here that didn't get up and speak. I would ask all of you that are here in favor of the Motorsports Park, please stand up and raise your hand. We could have had 100 people come up here and say, "I support the park," but we really didn't think that was what we needed to do today. Thank you. So again, key points to remember here are that the environmental document will be out next week, and it will answer a lot of questions. Some city staff members and some foundation members who participated in it are aware of what that document contains, but at this time, we're just not able to talk about it until it's released to the public. But it is a very, very in-depth document, intentionally so to cover all of those issues. The last thing I want to share with you is some frequently asked questions, and I'm available for your questions. And then I have two other speakers when you're done with me.
Any questions for Mr., oh, city manager?
Thank you, mayor. Want to clarify a couple of statements that were made, or maybe I can add and enhance, and maybe ask for clarification so that we can have clarity. First of all, I agree with Mr. Lynn's statement that since yesterday, we do have new understanding. Things are evolving day by day. What we haven't gained from yesterday is anything additional in writing. A lot of the misunderstandings that have occurred along the way have been because of verbal reports coming from FAA, from the state, from different individuals interacting at different times with the same people at the federal or state level. So even though we have new information, I just caution, it is new verbal information, and we have petitioned both the FAA and State Parks to put their criteria into writing. And I just caution that that's when we'll have a better comfort on exactly what's being required, one way or the other. Secondly, Mr. Lynn made the statement, nothing the foundation can do, there is nothing the foundation can do to cause the city to default on the grant. I'd say yes and no. And the reason I bring that up is because it is the city's grant, and maybe what that statement does is emphasize that much more critically how important it is that you, as a city council body, give careful consideration to how you act, how you vote, because that is what ultimately is going to guide what we do to either stay in compliance with the grant guidelines or to potentially default. So when, and part and parcel, that's going to be staff and the city attorney giving information and clarification as we receive it. And so if that happens, that's not happening because staff or the city attorney are taking one side or the other to the project. It's because we're trying to make sure that we follow along that compliance path. So to the extent that staff may tell you one thing, or the city attorney may tell you one thing, and the foundation tell you something else, and you act on however you act and whoever you listen to, then indeed, the foundation may cause you, if you give, if you're following their advice at a time that it's not in symphony with what staff or the city attorney are recommending, then it is possible for them to cause the city to be in default on the grant. Finally, I'd just like to maybe address, if I can, Mr. Lynn directly, because he made a statement and caused me some concern. And Mr. Lynn, it was at the point on page seven of the slides, so I assume it was in between your 13th and 14th slide, in between, I think it occurred between the one that's titled "The Environmental Process" and the one entitled "Economic Impact." And I just wondered if you might clarify your statement with something along the line that you said that the misunderstandings about whether or not NEPA apply solely lie with the staff and not with the foundation, was that correct?
I can read that comment if you'd like. It says, "He made the comment, 'City staff and Meridian handled discussions with the FAA that led to the misunderstanding regarding NEPA.'"
Is that correct?
That is a true statement based on the recall of the discussion that you gave me with regard to the FAA, which was that when you were talking to the FAA with regard to the lease process, at the very end of a conversation you were having with three individuals at the FAA, two of whom had previously spoken with Meridian, a fourth voice popped up and said, "Oh, but what about NEPA and ALP?" And, you know, I'm not trying to characterize it as a mistake on the part of the city staff or Meridian, because that was pretty new news to you all, and...
That's what I was seeking to clarify, and that occurred two weeks ago. Prior to that, two weeks ago, I think even you on several occasions had said to me, I think the first time we ever spoke of this, it was your understanding that NEPA wasn't going to be required.
And that was based on a discussion, I'm going to say, three years ago, and I gave you a copy of that email, where, you know, it did mention NEPA, but when we talked to Margie Drilling at the FAA, and both city staff and I talked with her way back when, she indicated she didn't feel that NEPA would be included, and she was the decision maker at that time. Unfortunately, she has since retired.
Right. So I think maybe that is a little more, that statement is probably a little more on point to what I wanted to point out. There's been plenty of understanding, misunderstandings and misunderstandings go around involving staff, involving consultants, involving the foundation because of different information that's come at various times from the state or from the FAA.
Well, and I think the other side of it is, the city has never been involved with a grant with the state. The foundation has never been involved with a grant with the state. And even as early as today, when I thought I understood what the match amount was, and just before I did this slideshow, I wanted to be sure I had it right, so I sent an email up to Sixto with what I thought the rules were, which was 26%. And he called me back and said, "No, you're completely wrong. We have this magic calculator that makes all these calculations." And then I gave him the actual number of the NEPA and SEQA, and he calculated the match, and I added the portion for the drag strip to it. And then I calculated and verified with him that 15% could be used for city general expenses, and he agreed that that was the amount. And then, again, he put it in the magic calculator and came up with a number, and we added the drag strip to it. And from that, we came up with what the match is for those portions of the project, and the fact that we would need to up our match by $8,000.
And even all of that was verbal and was different than what you had last heard from them verbally. And again, going back to my first point, why I'm looking forward to having things finally come from the state and from the FAA in writing. So thank you for helping me clarify those points. Thank you, mayor.
And I do have to say that I never asked previously what the match numbers were. I took that 26% as gospel, which I know city staff did too, so it was kind of an interesting change today.
Thanks, Mr. Turbo.
This isn't a question for the foundation, but back to staff here. When these documents become available for public comment, let us say that Federal Fish and Wildlife has no input, but then all of a sudden, they come in after the public part of it with something. Or there's a delay along the line with some of these agencies. Is that possible, that they could delay this and put us beyond the deadline? Or do these agencies that we have no, I hate to use the word "control" over, do they have to follow the public guidelines, or can they come in at any time on this?
I'm going to defer to our consultant, but my understanding is that while the agencies are supposed to follow the timelines that are legislated as well, I know more than once, there's been some slippage on that point, so I'll let the consultant.
And Joe Gibson, managing partner with Meridian Consultants. Remember, we have two different processes here, the SEQA process and the NEPA process. When the city decides to release the environmental document, that document will go out for 45-day public review, as required in the state SEQA guidelines. As part of that review, members of the public and public agencies will have 45 days to provide comment on that document. It will be up to the city at that point if they want to accept any late comment from anybody, public agencies or the public. So with that process, the city has full control, and the agencies have to respond. I will caveat that a little bit, that the administrative record that includes the SEQA document, until you make a decision and certify the document, is always open. And the city can always decide to elect or ignore any comments that are late. With the NEPA process, part of that process, and part of the reason we want to start early, is to start what is called consultation with the federal agencies, in this case, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and in the case of the cultural resources, the federal agencies defer to the State Historic Preservation Office for cultural resources. So not to wait on those consultations to start late in the game, but start those consultations early. Those consultations can take 30, 60, 90 days. And we're prepared to start that work here imminently if we're authorized to proceed with this work. Once that consultation is over, is when the FAA will then finalize and release the EA, at which point in time, federal agencies still can comment on the environmental assessment that is released. They also then have a 30-day timeline under the comment period to do so, and it's at the discretion of FAA to decide whether or not they want to accept any late comment. So there is a little bit of control in the process. A lot of it is the control at the discretion of the lead agencies.
Wouldn't the FAA be considered a lead agency, then?
FAA would be the lead agency on the NEPA document and the airport layout plan, yes.
So they have the potential of delaying this project out beyond these deadlines? So they have the potential of delaying this project out beyond these deadlines for the grant?
Anything can happen. I, I mean, they have the potential, but they, you know, in conversations with FAA, they've outlined their process to us, they've outlined the schedule, they're the ones that have encouraged us to start the consultations with the other federal agents early, and to work through them so they could expedite the process, so...
So I guess if there was a foo bar on this, we would catch this during the part of, where am I looking at in this, when the ALP would be reviewed for cost? It's a Navy term.
I think I know what the first two letters stand. I'm sorry. So if there, if there is an issue, your question was, I'm sorry, I got caught up with the...
I was looking in here where you were going to get the cost...
Right.
...on the ALP.
Yes.
We don't have that. That's not determined.
Right. All we, all we got was a very initial, what I'd say, broad brush stroke, thumb, sketch...
You know, so far, we've got a range of from $5,000 to $75,000, so I mean, there's certainly going to have to be a...
Right now, that's what we've got, and it'll be somewhere in there.
You know, get back to that. So I guess about the time we figure this out would be also the time that we would be able to contact the FAA about their schedule on this.
Uh, yeah, hopefully, but we can request things, like I said, again, not only get, request their schedule, but get whatever we can from them in writing. But I can't physically force them to give us anything like that, so we're operating with the best and newest information as we get a hold of that.
So they, they could be the ones possibly that would drag this process out to beyond the dates.
I will certainly say, the FAA can both help to expedite and hinder to delay the process. They, they have that kind of influence to be able to do either.
But the state wouldn't recognize any hindrance on the grant, and that would put us on the hook at that time?
I, I'd say, I, I hope to have some clarification from the FAA before we're too far into the NEPA process. Certainly, we, I, I think it's in our best interest regardless of whether you're pro-motorsports park or anti-motorsports park, it's in the best interests of the city to complete the SEQA process, certainly, and to pin down, if we are, if, if it is the direction of council to proceed with NEPA, for us to pin down those issues with the FAA as quickly as possible.
If, if I may interrupt a little bit. Well, maybe the foundation's first time and the city's first time working with state parks on these grants. This is not my first time, and I've worked with several jurisdictions, cities and counties that have processed grants through state parks. One of the concerns that state parks has with any grant is substantial progress. I've worked with jurisdictions that have had three-year grants, and they flog along for a couple of years, and state parks gets a little nervous. You haven't shown any substantial progress. Typically, state parks will recognize substantial progress when you complete a major milestone. Cities yet, foundations yet to complete a major milestone. In state parks' eyes, that first major milestone would be putting a draft environmental document on the street. We've seen many projects all along to where you're working on an environmental doc, working on an environmental doc, working on an environmental doc, and nothing ever happens. And that's the concern state parks has. You tell me you're working on it, but I haven't seen anything. So your first major milestone with state parks is releasing a draft environmental impact report. I've done the same with the state water quality control board, working on water rights hearings. They want to see some tangible evidence in the record, but you're making progress. The second milestone you will have on this process is certifying an environmental impact report. If you've got those two major milestones behind you, it's been my experience with at least three agencies working with state park grants, that state parks will reconsider their deadlines and give you latitude to continue on your project. They do not want to take your money back. They don't know how to account for the money they have. Remember the fiasco we had a few years ago? They didn't know what money they had. They don't want to take your money back. They want to see the project proceed. So I would say to you this, if you're making substantial progress and you're in good faith negotiations with Sixtoe at state parks, he will find a way, and state parks will find a way, to let the project proceed. The last thing they want any agency to do is default on a grant. They don't look good because they didn't do their due diligence in giving you a grant in the first place. You don't look good, and then they've got to figure out how they're going to reallocate grant money that was allocated three years ago on the fiscal budget that they don't know how to do. So it's been my experience, and like I say, at least three times on other grant process to where we've had this process, to where agencies have belavored the point, three years sounds like a long time when you're starting a grant. But then things happen, and stuff moves slow, and state parks gets nervous, and they want to see substantial evidence into the record that you're making progress. So if you do those things, I'm very confident that you can go back and have good faith negotiations with state parks and look to work out any differences in the timeline that would occur.
Confident enough to add some collateral here?
I'll do my best to help you make the timeline.
It's been two hours, and I apologize to the next two speakers, but I think we need to take at least a 10-minute break, and we'll get back to the next two speakers. Okay. Next two speakers from motorsports?
Mr. Mayor, Council, city staff, and members of the community, I just want to give my, I'm Carl Creel, I'm the chairman of the Motorsports Committee, and I just want to give my thoughts about why we're trying to do this project. John has given all the details and the numbers, and so has our consultant, Joe. But I just want to say that when I started promoting this project over five years ago, I wanted to do something motorsports-oriented for Lompoc. And over time, as the interest grew, I realized the project is, is, is more for the families in the community and their children. It's getting the kids something to do away from the computers and the TVs, and to do something physical and healthy outdoors, teaching them how to enjoy motorsports safely. And to that end, the kids' motor park was built. It was created quickly, and we, as a committee, had to be life-scanned and first aid-trained and certified in trail riding skills. And we partnered with the American Safety Institute to have certified instructors. We've gone out of our way to be competent at training young kids how to ride motorcycles safely. We learned as we took the safety training that teaching young people not to race on the streets was crucial to saving lives in our community. We've lost too many young teenagers over the years street racing. And I think people have seen in the news, street racing continues to grow. It seems to be a popular thing nowadays. So we need to give them a venue where they can race safely and not get killed. So I think we'll discuss that a little further. It's disappointing that in spite of all our good intentions, there's been so many hurdles to jump through and so much polarization in the community. Some of the opposition seems to be inflamed by a few people and their opinions as opposed to facts. But the reality is that anyone with an open mind can see the benefits of this project. The issues that people keep bringing up are not as bad as they think they are, and if we just get through the MOU, we'll see that to be true. And then there are people that say we're, we are costing the city money, and the fact is that the project is costing us a great deal of money. It's costing me personally money, and, and I just came into this to do something for the community, and all the members of the committee have donated their time and money. I mean, it's, it's, it's a labor of love. It's, we have the passion for it, and we continue to do so. But just like any business, we have expenses, promotional costs, utilities, internet service, and so on. And our biggest yearly expense, regular expense, is liability insurance. It costs us a great deal of money every year just to, to be there, put on our events, and do our fundraising. And as we have to deal with the increased demand for money, our fundraising grows larger every year, and we continue to rise to the occasion as needed. And at that point, I'd like to say that if we get through this EIR and it's certified, we have a number of large entities that are willing to pay this thing through to the end, so I'm not worried about the money situation. The potential is there to pay all the costs. And which brings us to our present situation. We've tried at every turn to do what we have to do to move forward, and the situation currently is not our fault, but we will deal with it and raise the money to cover these unexpected expenses. We'll continue to deal with whatever opposition and try to take care of the fear that people feel about this, because most people know nothing about what these motorsport parks are like. They just fear the worst. They think it's Bakersfield, what's not, never going to be. The reality of this project will be a benefit both recreational and economically to this community. We just need to let the studies determine any issues and mitigate them at that time. We ask that the council support continuing with the project. I want to remind the council that they need to consider the wishes of all their constituents, not just the few well-connected, overly vocal. Regardless, we, the volunteers, will continue to work for this dream, will continue to work towards a successful result, because we feel it's the right thing to do for the people of this community. Thank you.
Will Skyler, living in Lompoc, council and audience. Carl kind of hit a couple of the points that I had, so I don't take time to rehash that. Something I would like to point out, though, that we're finishing up our third year on the Little Park down there. It's still open, it's still being manned. People are trained, we have an instructor there and there, and we're certified, so it shows that we can do a job. If anybody, a record there says the city's paying all our bills. If you'd like, I've got a list here of what we've paid to run the Little Park down there and paid a bill in full, and I believe Mr. Finance Officer will back that up. I don't know where operating on city money is coming from, at least on that park. As treasurer for a year and a half for the organization, it is almost $100,000 worth of check writing to show financial responsibility there. I've worked on this project time, like I said before, this is my third run, if you could say it, getting a motorsports park built in Lompoc. Some of the reasons that we do is, I kind of went through a, a period of time after the Second World War, a lot of the military people came back, and of course, a lot of them had seen a lot of things that were rough to take, and they, they kind of did two things. They went down to the surplus yards and bought old Jeeps and tanks and half-tracks and stuff like that, and restored them and played with them, or a lot of them went back and had started hot rods before they went into the service and came back and go racing. And of course, one of our, in the auto racing circle, one of our heroes, Wally Parks, was a street racer in the LA area, and soon realized that, you know, getting kind of crazy. They, at that time, they had two groups, the groups that liked to go speed, how fast they could go, and they went out to the desert, did speed trials out there, and the other ones did how fast their car would do from stoplight to stoplight. It's kind of where the Christmas tree came from that we use today. So Mr. Alan Reinhardt was a bracket racer for many years, and he's been an announcer now for NHRA, and he's worked for a lot of companies and stuff. He wrote a little article the other day, and I want to kind of go through it real quick with you, and then he'll say so. They say history repeats itself, and I believe that is. I believe we're getting ready to start another generation of, of people coming back from the war and getting interested in things, and I think there's a general interest in, in cars coming back again and in, in the street side, so to speak. And it certainly seems to be the case, in 1951, drag racers were not exactly the most respected members of the community, and Wally Parks set out to change that by founding the National Hot Rod Association. He organized events that took drag racing from backroads and stadiums and streets, from dark alleys to Fortune 500 corporate boardrooms. Now, I heard some comment tonight about the racers and, and their, maybe their income deal, but I assure you, one owner of a team, he runs three Top Fuel dragsters, three funny cars and three superstock cars. He was asked a couple of years ago what he spent on his operation, and he said about $25 million a year. So it isn't, you know, the bums out of LA that are doing this. They're very successful people, very good people that are involved in, in auto racing. Fast forward to 60 years, today's deal, street racing is again making headlines, and not in a good way. The activity has been glamorized on TV and in movies, and it never made much sense to me. The truth is, street racing is very dangerous, kills people, lands people in jail, and in some parts of the country, you can get your car impounded or even crushed. I think that's a major statement. You're sitting at a crossroad right now, there's a Y on the road. You go one way, it's going to turn out one way, you take the other way, it could turn out differently. Alan comes out of Tucson, Arizona, and recently the strip there closed, and then some new people come in and opened it up. And he says, "I do appreciate that, at least in my area, it was correctly calling street racing, where in the past it was commonly referred to as drag racing." And that's one of my points I want to make, drag racing is not street racing. Anyway, the two, two guys went in there, and they, like I said, they took over the strip, so they wanted to see what they could do to improve it, what make, what would make it interesting. So they went out and they started questioning a lot of the racers, and it's what they want. And some of the things they wanted was that they, they wanted no scoreboards. In other words, usually at the end of the drag strip, there's two towers there that shows who won and what the times they turned. Well, they didn't want to do that, they just wanted to go back and race for fun. So they took out the scoreboards. One person asked, "Will there be any police or sheriff officers there?" Yep. And if you're real lucky, when you look to your right or your left in your lane, you might have one. So I love that. LA Sheriff's Department has three Top Fuel funny cars that they bring in the meets and participate with the racers, so get a chance to race a highway patrol or LA sheriff if you want. Keeping in mind that racers aren't bracket racers, they are more grudge racers who just want to prove how fast their car goes. Do we have a facility in Lompoc where, if I want to see my car runs against yours, can we go and safely do it? No. But we need that. Let's see, I think the rest of this is basically, I don't think you had much. Okay, the sales pitch, okay, this is another track that opened up. They, they had planned to open from eight to midnight, and they were planned on 100 cars and about 500 people. So they worked on their opening night. When they, open night finished, they had 300 cars and 2,000 in their audience. So I believe there is a demand for this type of a facility that we have. The pitch is really straightforward. For a cost of 20 bucks, you can race, have as many, as many times as you want, without ever getting a ticket, without any risk of your car being impounded, and maybe, most importantly, nobody will pull out in front of you. Isn't that worth the money? Thank you.
Okay. Any final questions from the council or anyone from the foundation? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Galavan, did you have something you want to add?
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify a little bit on the timeline as when the city, the state has made it clear the city can ask for an extension of the performance period in the grant. They have indicated that we need to pick a date for the end of the performance period that allows for adequate time for the city and the state to... that allows for adequate time for the city and the state to do the paperwork necessary for reimbursements and to close out the grant. The grant must be closed out and the reimbursements paid by the end of June, July 1st, the end of June. The state has also indicated to us that they want our paperwork for reimbursements by April 15th. So we need to pick a termination of our performance period that provides for adequate time for our management services department to process, to receive any invoices from consultants and the work they've done and process that paperwork and submit it to the state by April 15th, which is why I indicated we should extend our performance period to March 1st. The foundation, when they presented a timeline, they had a different date. The performance period date is the date we need to pick in order to adequately finish out the paperwork. But the state has made it very clear in our conference call with them today that Sixto needs the paperwork by April 15th. He has to submit it to his finance department by May 2nd. There are a lot of grants that are coming due at that time. They have, I don't know how many, but there are a lot of grants because this was a huge grant funding period. I think it was over $30 million that they gave out during this funding cycle. So they have a lot of paperwork they expect to all come in at the same time. And if we don't give them adequate time, we risk not being reimbursed. So the timing, you know, is, and allowing adequate time to process the paperwork and the invoices is really important.
Thank you.
And I think the other thing I wanted to just point out is the timing of the airport layout plan. That is precedent to NEPA. So it is, it is an essential part of the NEPA process. So deferring it affects NEPA. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Could this be taken care of with the MOU update?
Yes, if we amended the MOU to, and you directed staff to move funds, to indicate to the state to move funds from phase two to phase one to cover CEQA, NEPA, and staff time and extend the performance period to March 1st and amend the MOU to require the foundation to pay for the airport layout plan, the percent that is attributed to the drag strip and the match, that should set us on a course.
The only unknown then is the FAA with the layout plan and the cost of getting that done then so far.
Right, we are waiting for an actual quote. The estimate that, as we all discussed, is pretty widespread, so we need to have that narrowed down.
Right, and the timeline?
Our consultant has talked to them about the timeline and a commitment towards working towards that, there are those variables that are moving, but the timeline, they have indicated they can cooperate with. It's the variables that are outside of our control that, you know, that extra two months may help with.
Okay, just for information for the public now, council is now going to do some deliberation. Then we'll go back to the public for any final comment. Comments that you have not made initially at the beginning of the meeting, if you have some additional information you'd like to share with us or something you've heard during our deliberation, you'll have an opportunity to speak to us then. So bring it back to the council. Who'd like to begin? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hamdul.
I just, a couple of things that came up today on some of the things that we're looking down the road and talking about needing. One of the things I found out as going across the state is a lot of the facilities that used to race cars has closed because cities have moved to them because of noise and other things have run them out. And so I think that's, when this thing first went into the river bottom, that was my concern because there's, we can't even cut trees in the river bottom and let the water go through. So that isn't real concerns we have and the idea, there's other places that, well, we got the one outside of Beeltoe, Los Alamos, that's on the Chamberlain Ranch. That is not far out of town, but it is, it's a distance. My concern is that what we're doing, it's going to cause some future problems.
Okay, seeing no lights, I will take a little pass at this. Earlier, the, on one of the slides Sean Lynn was showing, he mentioned that the mayor and members of the community, or several members of the community, expressed a concern that the foundation would not be able to raise the funds for this project. And in fact, I do have concerns that the foundation will not be able to raise the funds. The project, the MOU was approved with the foundation, just for figures, two years ago. And to date, we have received here from the city, $50,000, $55,000 towards it. They've deposited $40,000 with the city and now additional $5,000, so $55,000 towards an EIR commitment of 118, almost $119,000. Let's see, they've always promised, and the other thing I want to point out, that as many times as this project has come before the city council, I've been on the city council the entire time, I have always supported this project. With the exception of the last time it came before, when they started asking for money, because the foundation has always told us right from the beginning that this is a volunteer project, they will not require city funds and they will not be asking for city funds. They will raise their own money. Well, that's why I'm concerned about their ability to raise these funds because the last time it came before the city council, they asked for money and here we are tonight, they're asking for money, oh, more money. Yes, they're asking for more money tonight. They're asking for money to help with the additional EIR, the NEPA, and possibly the airport plan, so additional money from the city. Okay, you'll have your turn later. So yes, I do have, do have concerns that the foundation will not be able to raise the funds for this project. One of us on this council was involved with a project, a volunteer project, nonprofit project known as LH CDC. Gentlemen sitting up here, I don't want this council to be known as the next LH CDC where the city continually puts money into a project and just because we've got the money into it, we figure, okay, we've gone this far, we have to go further, we have to go further, we have to go further. If and when, if it's tonight, or if it's next time, or whatever it is, that we have a chance to stop the bleeding before it gets out of control, we need to take that. We cannot let this become another LH CDC where the city is obligating ourselves to millions of dollars, which this project has potential of obligating the city of upwards of a million dollars, maybe more. So just remember that when you're voting tonight, that we were always told they would never need city funds. Now they're asking for city funds and they're, once before they've asked for it and now they're asking for it again. Councilmember Mosby.
Ms. Galavan, can you help me out here? What city funds is the mayor referring to? Because I understand that they're just, you front money and get replaced by the grant, so what city funds?
So I think what is being referred to is the, when we did the second MOU, it was basically creating a payment plan towards the foundation's obligation. So at that point, the foundation had the obligation to pay 50% of CEQA plus the drag strip portion, which is $118,793. That funding initially in the MOU was to be provided before we started the work so the city would have no exposure. That's how the original agreement between the city and the foundation was written. In the second MOU, the foundation came forward and asked for an amendment in order to do a payment plan that they would deposit all of that funding, the $118,793, prior to the certification of the EIR. So it was, you know, and they have been fundraising towards that and brought in another turnip.
There aren't any, but again, city funds, so what city funds? Because it's replaced by the grant, everything goes through as agreement, travels down, it's replaced by the grant unless...
The point is that the city is paying the money to the consultant because the funds deposited are not sufficient at this point to pay for that. So it's the city's line of credit.
So it's a line of credit, it's not money that's going...
It's going out to pay for consultant work as we speak.
It's green dollars, it's cash we would otherwise have on hand that is now being paid to consultants. As it stands, as long as, unless we default, we would get reimbursed on that, but it is dollars at risk right now and that's what she's saying.
Right, okay, so, but it's not, it made it sound like there's no, there's a chance for repayment.
And we know that now, we didn't know that until 2:00 today.
And if I could, and if the second amendment, I think it was the second amendment, the last amendment to the MOU, if that wasn't done, then we would have had the foundation money and we wouldn't be using any city money to make those payments, we were using the foundation money. That money would have got reimbursed too, but not all of it because that was part of the share.
Right, so what's going on is just, it's, the city's advancing some funds that are anticipated for full repayment.
Yeah, we're just, as a matter of full disclosure, saying we are putting, we are cash out and right now, we have an MOU that says no matter what, if we're out of cash and let's say something does go, it gets filed up beyond all recognition. If something like that happens, that the foundation has committed to repay us. However, there's not a security mechanism in place, I mean, this is a matter of disclosure. You know, in other words, you can't get blood out of a turnip, so it is dollars at risk.
Right, I understand, but now also as well, you guys front the portion of money that's being reimbursed by the grant, right? Because you don't have grant funds sitting in there, so you're kind of doing the same with the grant currently, right, with the state. The state has a...
Right, originally, the foundation was going to put all the cash that would have been needed upfront and we would have been able to coordinate reimbursements that way without involving the city treasury. Under the revised situation, the current situation, it does involve the city.
Right, so it's money being up, being fronted with anticipation of replacement both by the state grant and both by the foundation.
Yeah, as long as we don't do anything that would disqualify us.
I'm just looking for some clarification because we do, there is full anticipation, we're not moving forward, we haven't been moving forward without full anticipation of completely being reimbursed.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. That's understood.
But the reason we're here tonight is because more is being asked than we originally anticipated. That's the reason we're here tonight.
And even though there is anticipation of repayment, there is no guarantee that this will be repaid, absolutely no guarantee. Anyone else from the council? Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to reference all the people that, that came out here to reference the quality of life and what we expect from Lompoc. Lompoc actually is, in fact, in our minds, trying to raise the bar, so we raise the quality of life because it is true, you have to almost leave here and come back to see what we have here. It's not about the motorsports group, in fact, I think those are a bunch of, you guys are a great stellar group that are volunteering your time. I think probably the location is the most in question here, I think. The fact that we spend money to get something done here is not a crime. The thing about it is, is the location going to ruin more people's quality of life? I don't know exactly, you know, the whole history of how that came about, you know, I'll be honest with you here, but you know, this is the project, this is what we're going for, but I do hear you, you know, the quality of life around the homes there that are all on the upper end, you know. I'm sure, you know, I've run into many, many people that, you know, they're concerned with being on just the main street in Lompoc, you know, whether it's Seventh Street, whether it's Central, you know, that little bit of noise could be annoying depending on your sleep patterns, your work hours and stuff. So, you know, I want to make sure that you guys understand that we are, I am considerate in taking into consideration the people who think that their quality of life would be ruined here especially, and I think all of you have to agree that excessive noise is going to bother all of you at one time or another depending on your life. It has nothing to do with racing cars or motorsports. I just wanted to make that little comment, okay? I do care about the quality of life. We are trying to raise the bar. Economic development is important, that's exactly what we're striving for. Economic vitality is basically what we're striving for in Lompoc so that people can come here in Lompoc and feel like they have a chance of being successful in the business. We're not asking everyone to move here, the people that live here have their own reasons, but many times, you know, we have the Air Force Base here, you know, and it's kind of a compliment to know that we have so many veterans and people that were in the, in the military that were stationed here and they chose to live here, you know, so it's a compliment to our valley. Only the people that have lived somewhere else in these highly dense areas can attest to, hey, what we have here, okay? Sometimes it gets windy and I was glad the wind went away, but, you know, it blows your hat off, but, but we do care.
Anyone else from the council? Okay, seeing no lights come on, we're going to open this up for public comment. This is your opportunity to speak to us about anything you've heard this evening. Again, I'd like to ask, ask you not to repeat what you've said earlier, just maybe some comments of what you've heard since then. And again, yes, go ahead and line up.
Good evening, Mayor Lingel, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. Wow, I now know what the term smoke and mirrors means. Never knew it before, but after listening to some of the stuff tonight, smoke and mirrors, there are a lot of car people here tonight and I want to say, you know, I totally understand that. I happen to be married to a car guy, spent years at racetracks, at races, did some racing myself. I get it, I love it, and I support it. That's not what this is about. This is not about the motorsport project in terms of a car racing, this is about the location. I go back to over five years ago when I sat in this council and I heard this won't cost the city a cent. When I heard that we'll raise money, it's been over five years and they've come up with a small little amount of money during a time when it was at the most popular, when everybody was talking about it. You have to look at the cost of this, not just what it's going to cost in actually doing it, the cost it's going to have on this community, the cost it's going to have on the homeowners, and you have to look at the timeline. Nowhere, when the city talked or when the consultant talked, did they factor in the lawsuits? And you go, lawsuits? I can guarantee you, you cannot put a drag strip next to an active riverbed and not expect environmental lawsuits to come at you. You cannot put a drag strip in the city limits and not expect homeowners to come after you. Come on, get serious. This is not 1950. In 1950, you could have drag strips, everybody got into it, but we live in a different world today. If you want to put a project like this, find a location that's not in city limits, that's not going to impact everybody, but you go around this country and look at how many drag strips today are being placed within city limits, it's just not happening because of the cost, because of the environmental concerns. You know, I think Mr. Mosby said that there's a full anticipation that there will in fact be paid back and, gosh, that makes me nervous, you know. I anticipate a lot of things and the thought that we're going to spend an enormous amount of our money with the hope that maybe they'll pay it back when they haven't been able to raise the money to date. You know, if you say it, it doesn't make it so. You have a responsibility to each and every taxpayer in this community, to the residents, not only now, but in the future. I would suggest, Mr. Lynn gave you three options, I will give you a fourth one. Tonight, you need to pull the plug on this project, you need to stop it now, and then get together with all the car guys... get together with all the car guys and help them find another location. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dorita Bradshaw. I live in Glen Ellen, which is a quarter of a mile from the proposed location for this park as the crow flies, and I promise you, I will hear it, and I don't want to. I don't have a problem with the motorsports park, per se. I don't have a problem with the motorsport, with the motorsports guys. I think it's an admirable hobby if it's something they want to do, but I don't personally want to listen to it, and I don't want it to affect my quality of life. That said, Mr. Lynn got up here and he gave you a presentation where he talked about the economic goodness that's going to come from this. That is his opinion. I can give you an economic not-so-goodness coming from my opinion. My property values are likely to be affected, and if I choose to sell my home in the future, I have to disclose that there's a motorsports park there. How many people are going to pick up an environmental impact report and read it before they bother to sign on the dotted line, or even look, come in and do a walk-through on a house that's for sale? I think this is a bad idea. On top of that, you would not give me a loan with no collateral. I understand that they got a grant, but there are a lot of conditions associated with that grant, and if for any reason that goes into default, you have just blown our money. Not yours, ours. And I would appreciate if you would think long and hard before you commit any more of our money to this project with no collateral. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne Rouget, resident of Lompoc for the last 23 years. My husband and I have worked very hard to improve the quality of life in this city. This project will not do anything to improve any quality of life for those of us, for all of us. I really think it's, it will affect the whole city. Mr. Lynn talked about economic development, all he did was talk about 25% of the people that come here will be in hotels. Where did the other 75% of the people go? They bring in their RVs, I guess, I don't know. Economic development is not only tourism, it's jobs. How many jobs will this project generate? I don't think very many. Several years ago, Mayor Lynn, excuse me, God, Mayor Lingel talked about LHCDC. I was on the council at that time, and that was another slippery slope that we took. We listened to people, you have turned down two space center proposals because they could not come up with the money and guarantee the money. And this is about money. Our money, your money, and you are responsible to protect this city and its citizens. That is one of the charges that you have as you were elected. One of you was appointed, the rest of you were elected by your constituents, and you are responsible for that. So think long and hard about that. This project is non-sustainable, so you get the whole thing built, you use the money, you take from Peter to pay Paul, Phase 1, Phase 2, whatever that does, you'll end up in Phase 2 with not enough money to construct it, and then what happens? It gets constructed. How is it going to be sustainable? How is it going to be sustainable? This group, I'm a car person too. I used to go to races on the airport of foreign cars way back when I was in college. So I do love cars, I love car shows. My husband has a classic car also, but, and nothing against the people, the men and women, it's women too that want this project, I understand, I see you all here, but it just is in the wrong place, and we were told it wasn't going to cost the city anything, and they're still coming to the trough, and the trough is our money. So remember that when you get to vote.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Walt Fassold. I live in the county, just outside the city, and I just want to express my personal opposition to this motor park in terms of the noise and the issues that I see it's going to present. And so I think you're going to see a lot of opposition, both from within the city, as you've heard some this evening, but also in the surrounding community outside the city limits. And I would ask the council to seriously consider how much opposition there might be and what the level of that opposition might entail, and I think it will be significant. Former Mayor Lynn has mentioned a list of projects that the foundation has accomplished. If I look at that list, I look at a lot of neat things, and I give credit to the foundation for some really good things that I think are good for the community and help enhance the community. I don't think a motorsports park is something that enhances this community. Generally, a bedroom community, you don't have any big industry in the area. I would encourage you to focus on higher-end business and bring that into town, and that will do something really, really good for this community, and I think everyone's interested in the welfare in the future of the city. Members of city council tonight have asked some very good questions that had to do with the timeliness of getting through all the reviews and dealing with the regulatory hurdles. My background is I've run plants in many states in this country. I'm quite familiar with environmental laws, regulations, dealing with government entities at different levels, and I'm also well aware of the difference of doing those things within the state versus other parts of the country. And I just would just encourage you to really look at that and dig into it deeper, because the likelihood of major and significant delays is real. It's not imaginary, it's not unlikely to happen, it is very likely to happen, and you're going to see big and substantial delays. I'm not saying that because I'm against the project, I'm saying that based on experience on things that I wanted to do, things that I wanted to make happen in various parts of this country, and it's amazing what the difficulty is. And if you don't have public support behind it, it'll be even more difficult. And I just encourage you to look at that, continue to ask questions. I personally have never seen a business case for this project. I don't know if there is a bona fide, valid, serious business case, whether the city has reviewed that, if there is one, and if there's been an independent review to challenge the assumptions within the business case. So I don't know if, I can ask a question, but I would like to get an answer from someone as to whether a business case exists and has it been validated.
Okay, we'll try to answer that during our discussion. Thank you.
Okay.
You'll need to wrap it up right now. Just, you have a final comment?
Just, final comment is that I believe there's enough hurdles, whether you're for this project or against it, that it could be a long, long time before it could actually become a reality. I question, with due respect to former Mayor Lynn, the validity of the economic benefits to the city, and I question the use of city resources to help support a business initiative, and whether that's in line with other businesses.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up now. Thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Steve Tribble, Lompoc resident. Few things here that I think just need to be brought up and reminded, the Meridian Consultants gentleman, who did a very good job, but I think his timeline's a little rosy, and part of that you must remember is they've got a little skin in the game, you know? They get paid if we continue doing this. So it's not like he's going to come up here and say it's going to take longer than it should, because they don't get paid otherwise. So that would be one thing to think about. I also, there's a couple of comments here by Mr. Mosby that makes me start to think about the conflicts of interest you have, and that I think you should recuse yourself from any vote that concerns the motorsports park. It's known that you were a former member of this foundation. The fact that you were talking about that you're okay with giving our money collateral-free, and you don't think that's a problem with it, that concerns me, and I think there are a little bit of, you've got a little bit too close feelings with this past project, that I think you should recuse yourself from any voting on this. I think the other gentleman talked about the difference on other projects, on John Lushart, and I agree, that the other project is really great. The difference probably with those and this project is the opposition. You probably didn't have very many opposition on that because you didn't mess with the quality of life of most of other people in this community. These projects, the project that you're working on right now, probably 25% of that, of the Lompoc community is around that area, and will, their quality of life will be significantly decreased. I also question your assertions when you talk about the economic benefit, why you would use Santa Maria Fair numbers and not use maybe Santa Maria Raceway numbers, which are a lot less and leave probably more likely the economic benefit we'd see from a raceway of this part. And finally, I don't think it was fair that you let him, let people stand up and show a show of hands for the support in here. Let me stand up for the thousands of homes, probably a thousand homes that live around, that would be around that raceway, and raise my hands for probably the families that live there that would not be for this. And let me give you an economic benefit on this, is that each of those homes probably average about $300,000. I did the math, that's about $300 million. I can guarantee you that most likely, the cost, deficiences of that, our home values there would go down probably 5% to 10%. Let me just use the 5% number, not the rosy number. That's a $15 million loss of capital that those people in our community would see. That's property taxes that we get, as well as other things, plus the fact that we won't be able to sell our homes as well, nor will you be able to get people to come in here and buy. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to just make it one comment. In defense of Mr. Mosby, being a former member of the foundation, I myself was the original chair, or treasurer for the foundation when it first started prior to being on the city council, so I just want to be a little defensive, or give a little defense to Mr. Mosby for not recusing himself based on that. Next speaker, please.
I'm looking at the city of Lompoc, the logo right here on this podium, and I see a rocket, I see some stars, I see the furrows in agriculture and flowers. I'm wondering, why would you want to put the image of a dragster and couple it into this, put it into this logo? What does it say about this city, about your intentions? These people have talked about the destruction of property value. This man has given a projection about occupancy tax that's unknown. He's said nothing about the demographics of the actual people who are going to be here, what they're going to spend. He made, he made an assertion that the people that would be going to this track were people from Lompoc Valley. Well, why would they spend the night here if they live here? Doesn't make any sense, but that's something else. The key thing is, if you, there will be lawsuits, I can guarantee it, so you didn't factor that into your milestone schedule. The milestone schedule is extremely flawed, you have too many dependencies to put more money, the more of the city's money into this project, good money after bad, right?
That's true.
It is something that is suspect. You talk about, oh, the state's going to pay it back, but they've already said that the issue here is that you make, if you don't, if you pull money from the Phase 1, right, to pay for this environmental impact report, and there's no way of knowing exactly what's going to happen, who's, if fish and game, all the, you have all these different contingent factors that you have to line up, and you can't guarantee they're going to happen. So you want to cancel literacy program, right? You want to cancel a fire station, but you want to support something that puts a dragster, why don't you do this? Let's get Elon Musk in with electric cars. We'll solve our problem, they'll be quiet, they'll be silent, and then you'll have someone associated with this city that has some credibility that's related to SpaceX. Let's get, let's get a Tesla raceway, we solve all of our problems. But the point is, is that to gloss over this idea that you're going to meet all your milestones, you haven't even anticipated a lawsuit. A lawsuit will come, just as Joyce said, I guarantee it. So you don't know what those, what's going to happen with that, or any other kinds of lobbying that's going to come. So this idea of predating this milestone on a bunch of contingent things happening is specious. It's, you can't rely on it. So how can you spend in good faith money on an idea that depreciates property, that hurts property owners, right? There's nothing wrong with auto racing. Everybody loves, I grew up with fast cars, we all did, but this idea is flawed, this program is flawed, and if you do it, I don't think you're acting in the best interests of the community that pays the taxes here.
My name is Michael Donahue.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Ronald Moes. I've been a 30-year resident of Lompoc. I worked 12 of 35 years as a probation officer on your streets. I've locked up your criminals, and I sent your drug addicts to rehab. I've retired here. I bought my dream house, and I was going to be happy. Three years ago, 2013, this project popped up, and I started following it with great interest, because I could sense something was amiss. I know the city's policies well. I also wrote and managed many state and federal grants in my career in probation. I have attended nearly every council meeting for three years, called through city documents, observed city council actions on this project, and am convinced this entire project is a bunch of lies and voodoo economics. Line number one, 12,000-person petition that was represented to the state constituting 27% of the city supporting this project. This was never vetted. With all the city resources, you could have at least vetted it to see if the people who signed that petition were actual Lompoc residents, and how many of them were over the age of Since we're telling half-lies, let's take their 12,000, let's cut it in half of 6,000. That's only 14% of the population. You're looking to inconvenience 86% of this population, so 14% of the people can have their jollies for a recreational activity. Line number two, the kids moto fund park. This was a ruse concocted by the Lompoc Valley Parks Recreation and Pool Foundation and Motocross Subcommittee, of which you, sir, were a committee member, and you cut the deal with Sixto Fernandez and Mr. Carl Creel over here. So you were the one who was more or less responsible for this whole thing. So yes, you are conflicted, and you need to recuse yourself, otherwise it's going to show what a scam this thing really is. I'm angry. I've lost a lot of sleep in three years with the thought my city was going to run me out of my own house. That's what you're doing, because I'm out of here. I'm taking my 30 years and my taxes and going someplace else. The grant required an existing and operational OHV facility, and the reason for this is because they want, the state, when they give money, they want to have written, they want to have an entity with the infrastructure, the financial resources, the personnel, and the experience to execute and manage a grant. This group here has failed on every level. Line number three, the Lompoc Valley Pool Recreation can execute and manage this project. They were 10 months late submitting initial plans, which should have been done before the grant was awarded. They were two months late submitting refined plans, they were three months late submitting their portion of the project money, and as a result, we're 15 months behind schedule. So now, their lack of planning has become our rush, and we have to rush headlong into a $140,000 loan, of which they've already received an additional $78,000. The bottom line is, the taxpayers pay it over 80% of this EIR, and I don't care if you want to call it the state money or the county's money, it's wrong. This needs to go someplace else. It does not belong in the middle of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Janet Blevins, and I have lived in this community for 30 years. I happen to live within a quarter of a mile of the proposed racetrack. It's kind of ironic, I signed the petition at Bob's Box Shop in favor of this project. I had no idea it would be in the city limits between the river and the airport. I mean, if you were trying to find a location that would be more inappropriate, I don't think you could do it. This is a great project. It is in the wrong place. How many times can that be said in 2 minutes and 15 seconds? Great project, wrong place. Great project, wrong place. There's somebody sitting on the council who owns property outside of town, maybe it should go out there. Great project, wrong place. I love racing too. I was at a motorcycle race when I was a, you know, 20 years ago. Unfortunately, my best friend who was racing around a track that was a bona fide track, hit the chain link fence and died. That happens in racing. But that's not the point of this. My tax dollars should not, not a single penny of the taxes that I pay should go to this project. Not one single penny. Not when my city is raising all of the rates, all of the fees, because we don't have any money here. This is absolutely the wrong place for this project. It should not go forward. It should not, do not throw any more good money after bad. It should not, do not throw any more good money after bad. Wrong place. I've got fifty more seconds.
Okay, good evening. My name's Morrell Brooks. I don't know whether I said I support the project on my card, and I oppose the location. I guess I'm here on the same thing. I want to respond to somebody's comment earlier that this could be millions of more dollars, and that's why I'm holding here, this is an EIR. This is not the ERER that we're all waiting for, and I had not planned to come tonight. I had planned to wait until the EIR is out, and so I could read through and study it and see what is being proposed. But I think with, I think, I don't know how many years ago when this was first proposed, I went into one of my old files, and I found something from two thousand and six that talked about the San Inez River. San Inez River is one of the California's critical coastal areas. Who has regulations over the river? City, County Santa Barbara, Coastal Commission, Regional Water Quality Board, State Water Resources Control Board, California Coastal Conservancy, California Fish and Wildlife, United States Fish and Wildlife, and NOAA. So when picking a, a location for the drag strip, somebody should have known, this couldn't have been really just the most biologically sensitive place in the entire Lompoc Valley. So, we're looking at what is going to be in the EIR, and I'm just going to speculate, sorry, but it's, it's how these things work. We're going to have to pay mitigation fees for, two, there were two hundred submissions, and I know some of the submissions for the draft DIR came from people who support it because it's going to give some recreation. But many of the comments that went in had to do, let's say, the Environmental Defense Center, thirty-four pages of commentary. Those impacts that they were projecting, they're going to have to be mitigated. Monitoring costs, everything is going to have to be monitored. That is going to cost so much money. Traffic, you might have to change some roads and some access places coming into this. Cultural resources, there are so, they're going to be, they'll find them. That means everything has to be monitored as there's construction. Air quality, that might mean monitoring off-site. Greenhouse gas, all this is very, very expensive. Hazardous material, there's going to be monitors there all the time because, you know, there's going to be lots of hazardous materials there. Hydrology, the water quality, when somebody threw out the figure a million, maybe millions of dollars, I have a feeling when this document comes out, that's what is going to be found. So anyway, good project, not a good location. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
J.C. Knapp, Lompoc resident. I've been here a little over forty years. I retired out of the base, decided to stay here, met my wife, raised my family, have four kids, and you know what? There wasn't one activity that my kids do while they were growing up that the city supported. By that I mean providing facilities other than the parks that we would go to occasionally. We got into scouting, that's a private organization. We got into rollerblade hockey at that roller rink that used to be up in the county area of Vandenberg Village. And they got into youth wrestling, which was part of the YMCA. So there wasn't much that the city's done, and now we have an opportunity to do something like that. The location seems to be a real problem, and I understand that, but you know what? The steelhead are not a concern anymore. There hasn't been water in that river in ten years, not since sixty-nine. And I don't expect to see any more unless we get the North, North State to start pumping more water in the Kachuma. But I'm going to stand here, at least one voice in the wilderness, and support this project. And I think it's a wise decision that the council does, too.
Pamela, local resident. I, I haven't heard anybody complain about the project if it was located somewhere else. The only complaint about this project is, is the location. And I'll remind you that John Lynn was the mayor when this location was picked, and because it's city property, and he manipulated everything. It, it is the wrong location. And as far as Councilmember Mosby, he should recuse himself. Mayor Lingal, you were on the, you were associated with them when they were doing projects that I don't think the community was against a single one of them. The barking dog park, the disc park, the bike park. So to compare those things that they, they have done is, is not comparable. The entire community supported, I don't think you had one complaint about any of that. You've heard a lot of complaints about this, and, and the folder of facts, we, we're used to the John facts. So, all of these pie in the sky numbers and stuff, you can do anything to make it give you the bottom line that you want to have. So, you need to listen to the community. That's your job. We didn't hire you as bankers to give unsecured loans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi. I'm Brandon Matsia, local resident for thirty years. I'm, I support the motorsport park. One of the issues that seems to be a big deal today is location, next to the loudest part in town, which is the airport, that produces more noise than any one of these vehicles that are going to be there, but they're not complaining about that. I understand. I mean, they got to find something new to complain about, because there's a lot of things that you can complain about if you find it. We have a, a thing with progressing in life, in order for anything to happen, to be better to, for anybody, there's a little bit of risk involved. And everybody in this room, and up here, has had to risk something at one point in their life, and you normally do it for your benefit, and then sometimes you, you don't, you don't make it. But you always try, and in that trial, there's a little bit of risk. Not everybody's been handed everything. I guess, hope you guys choose wisely on this, because everybody that's supported this project, or even been against it, has risked or spent all this time they could have been doing something else with, really could have. I mean, they must have been searching for three years to find problems with this, because I haven't seen so many people come up here to speak bad about this project. Another thing about that, speaking about the project, is there's a lot of people here from out of town. I've got a lot of stuff to say. I don't know if that, if that's okay, or you guys are supposed to take that. I grew up here, I came here when I was four. I was sixteen years old, I've been in the car since my dad brought me into it. I, I was in a, an accident in a car. I was doing the wrong thing. I was speeding in a bad area, and it was through an uncontrolled intersection. Somebody lost their life, and I regret it, and I'll regret it for the rest of my life. But, what were my options at that time? Were probably not to do that, not to do anything, and to, to stay idle and do absolutely nothing. And I did a stupid thing, and I didn't have any options for it, and right now, there's an option to keep other people, like I was, out of this situation, and out of harm's way, and out of killing other people, making bad decisions. If you have a good option in front of you, take it. This is a good option. This option right here could save lives. And yeah, airplanes are noisy. Just have a good night.
Thank you. Next, please. Okay. If people can, that want to speak, if they can line up, so we don't waste a bunch of time as you're coming forward.
Terry Hammond, Lompoc. Well, I'm going to suggest that you not begin the NEPA. I think that removes a risk that you, you don't know, you know where it's going. FAA says that it might take them eighteen to twenty-four months. We don't know that. They haven't given to you in writing. You have to assume that the, you have until December to get something done, and that assumption is based on really very little. The foundation does not have the money to fund this park out. And I, I don't know why that doesn't seem to calculate with the whole process of, we want a drag strip, we want a drag strip, we want a drag strip, off, off highway park. But the money that is funding the off-highway park is taxpayer money. It's not the drag strip. You know, if somebody wanted to have a drag strip, why don't you just go buy some land? There's a perfect trailer park out there at Vandenberg Air Force Base. Buy the land and build the park out there. You know, some of the Vandenberg Village people may not like that, but here's the deal. I grew up in San Bernardino, Pomona, great drag strip. I mean, racing is a very exciting sport, but you have to plan to put it in the right The, there's unknown environmental mitigations. You just don't know what, what you're looking at here. I can, I, I, I have some very strong suspicions that this is not going to be an easy thing for you to get through. And I'd like to know what this, this time, timing of work from FAA. Where, where is the written documentation to that? Because I, I haven't seen anything in the report, staff report, or anything else. The, the one thing that's really interesting is, I'll close with this, because the National Hot Rod Association is not going to come here to race. This is going to be some organization that doesn't even have racetracks in Lomp, in California. So, come on, this is not going to be a big thing here. NHRA, yeah, it probably would be, but not IHRA. Counsel, I don't, I'm glad I'm not up there.
My name is Michelle Toniotzini. Mayor Lingal and Councilman. I'm, I'm going to say something that hasn't been said yet, is the benefit to the community and the future of the children. I'm a ASI ATV instructor, which is the ATV Safety Institute, and I get to see these children learn how to ride safely, and part of the, the teaching is the respect, tread lightly, taking care of the property that they're riding on, respecting others around them. So it's not just about a drag strip, it's about having motorsport recreation. I can't even express enough how many children I see every day that could benefit from an outlet of learning to ride a motorized vehicle, which would benefit them in the future when they learn to drive cars on the street, because they're already going to be aware of looking and paying attention to things that are all around them. It is the California state law that anybody who rides an ATV under the age of eighteen has to be safety certified, or their parent has to be safety certified. I'm excited to be part of that. I unfortunately can only volunteer over in Santa Maria. They have an awesome Ride Three program that California State Parks granted money for. The ATVs, it's not discriminatory, you don't have to have money, it's a free program that I get to be part of. The age group unfortunately is, is only from, I think it's, it's twelve to ninety-two, or fourteen to ninety-two, anybody can go do it. It's exciting to see, there's some students, I don't think that they're going to make it through the class, and I'm afraid when they start driving, but by the end of the class, with being able to teach them, it's just incredible that I'm a part of that. I would love to see it here. And it's exciting to hear that those who don't want the motorsport park by the airport, but they want it, maybe they can throw some money down to help find that spot where I can help contribute to this community in helping them learn. I get to do it out at the kids' park, I can't do a full-on class because it's just not there yet, but I'll continue to do it in Santa Maria and just hope for that day that we can provide it here in Lompoc. Thank you.
Councilmembers, Mayor, John Lynn, Foundation Chair. I want to address a few little questions that people raised along the way that I, I know you wouldn't have the answer to. One was why we use the Santa Maria Fair Park numbers rather than the Santa Maria round, roundy-round track. Number one, the activities at the Santa Maria Fair Park were motorcycle racing, and they were multi-day events, so they were similar in, to the type of activities that would be at this park. Someone mentioned electric racing, actually that's the thing that's coming. There's already electric class in both drag racing and in motocross, and those are the bikes and the cars that are winning, because they're faster. So, I'm sure that in my lifetime, we will see only electric cars racing, it'll be really Just a question for the staff, maybe they could answer afterwards, is have we begun submitting invoices to the state for the work that's been done? A number of people said, great project, wrong place. And the assumption there is that somehow we picked this place over all others because it was the worst place to do it. The reality is, we actually looked at prior efforts on the Air Force Base, we looked at prior efforts to get the trailer park on the Air Force Base, and we found that it would take seven to ten years, and we probably wouldn't get it in the end, because those who had gone through the process never got a deal signed. And that's because the Air Force has a very cumbersome leasing process. We also looked at some sites in the county, and reviewing it with county staff, they indicated we would probably be fifteen years to get an approval, and I'm not sure I'm going to live that long, so we didn't, we didn't take that on. The Coastal Commission has no jurisdiction on the property, and realize that this is not some pristine piece of, of river bottom. It is in fact an industrial site. From the mid-sixties until the early two thousands, it was covered with industrial businesses, storage yards, and when we went out and mapped it, there is junk everywhere, and we didn't start digging, we just found it on the surface. There's a lot of discussion about noise, and I'm privy to what's in the environmental document, but I can't share it with you. I would just ask that everyone read the environmental document next week, and remember that Central and Avenue and H Street are the two noisiest cities in town, and as someone pointed out, the airport is one of the loudest things in town. It is a very in-depth noise study, and it utilizes both actual measurements made with real cars and a very fancy computer modeling system. So in closing, to date, we've given, we have given or will give, when the state pays us about seventy-nine thousand dollars to the city. That is of the one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and four dollars that will be required for the Sequin NEPA match, according to Sixto Fernandez. So we need to raise about another twenty-four thousand dollars to make the city whole. I'm extremely comfortable that we can do that. We raised five thousand dollars one day this week by putting some time into it. And in the end, the city had, the city council has the ability to decide, once the environmental phase one is complete, whether or not we move on with phase two to eliminate the city's risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, Lompoc residents, my name's John Johnson. Good evening. I don't know where to start. I just heard about this meeting an hour before I got here, or before six-thirty, and, you know, everyone has a dream. Well, I moved to Lompoc in nineteen eighty-five, and my dream was to see the flower fields, and now all I see is houses. Matter of fact, where do you show me where the map is for the flower fields? There are very few, I have to drive outside of Lompoc to see the flower fields. People say they have allergies and asthma. Any doctor anywhere in California will tell you Lompoc's not the place to be if you have allergies or asthma. It's just, it's reality. Dust, I think they, when they build a park, because I race everywhere and all over the states, I do National Heron Hounds, Wyoming, Nevada, Arizona, all, all kinds of places, New York, but the dust, there is no dust, because they have sprinklers and they have waters, just like a, a winery's water their vines, we water the tracks. Jurisdictions over the riverbed, the city of Lompoc, the sheriffs, they really don't have jurisdiction. They've kind of implemented that they do, it's really just federal. That's a whole nother story. For the kids, for the families, I, I For the kids, for the families, I know a couple of people in wineries, and you know, I drink wine, I'll have a beer from time to time, but that's about it. And a lot of them were against it, and I go, "Well, kids can't go to the wineries and drink their wine, and you won't allow us to eat the grapes." And I just don't eat grapes and drink the wine. So the flower fields, they're not here. The houses in this town, it's unbelievable how many houses there are. And then people worry about poison and gases and the environmental issues in this town. I worked at Vandenberg Air Force Base for 22 years.
Please address the council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I worked at Vandenberg Air Force Base for 22 years. And I've been a pool guy for 30 years. My first six months at Vandenberg is I started my own business. So I worked there for 22 and in business for 30. Unsymmetrical dimethanol hydrozine, thousands of gallons on that base. 130,000 gallon tank cracks, bye-bye Lompoc. Nitrogen tetroxide, 630,000 gallon tanks, one tank cracks, bye-bye Lompoc. I do got to say, I'm running out of time. The city council members, and you know, there's not a day in this world that each and every one of us don't do something bad, and there's not a day in this world that each and every one of us don't do something good. I would never sue anybody. I lose both my legs, I'm not going to sue you. So lawsuits are from those people that want to sue you. Nothing against any of you guys, I think all you guys did good, and I think the people that had the speaking did it well. As far as eliminating somebody because you took part in something in the city, you know, I disagree with all that. I think all you guys are doing a good job and doing your best, and so are we. Off-road park, I'm for it.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
I'm Josh Creel. I'm a son of Carl Creel. Just want to say, you know, we talk about kids needing something to do. I mean, I've grown up here all my life, lived here all my life, and there's nothing to do here. You know, I have friends that, that do race, they go street racing, because there's no place to go. They'll ask me, "Hey, you want to go?" "Nah, man. I'm not willing to get ticketed or lose my life," or something like that. And I want to go do that, but there's no place to go. There's, and in this town in general, there's nothing to do. So seeing a business come in, that's going to come in and bring some kind of revenue, would be nice. I mean, shoot, I have to go work out of town because this place is dying. There's been plenty of people that have lost bits because there's just no money here, you know? As well as, you know, people talk about the dust and stuff like that coming up in the wind, it's, there's that little crop field over that gets tilled all the time, you know? Why don't they complain about that? The dust coming up from that, motorsports parks, racetracks, dirt bike tracks, all that stuff, like you were saying, has sprinkler systems to keep the dust down. So what dust are they talking about? As well as other people, I believe a gentleman was talking about a history of flowers and the spaceships and stuff like that. Lompoc does have a rich racing history, and Will can tell you about that. I've heard many stories from Will Skyler talking about the race history back then, but, you know, I guess people that don't live here wouldn't really know that. But that's all.
Thank you. Carl, how did you get such a good-looking, articulate kid?
Oh, hey, everybody. I'm Federico. I kind of grew up here. I moved here for Mammoth when I was seven, so consider myself part of the community. And, well, when I was younger, I had an accident here in Lompoc, and I'm really lucky to be here. And ever since that, I like, I would, I wouldn't like anybody to live through that because I actually broke my neck, and I'm lucky to walk. And I, I have a younger brother who will be driving soon, and I would love him to learn from what I have learned, because I go to racetracks also. And I have to drive down to Bakersfield, take my whole weekend up, and, you know, somebody said, "Well, what happens to those 20, or to the other 75% that, that don't stay in Lompoc?" Well, we go home. You know, we have a place to stay. You know, we all go home, and, you know, like, not everybody, you know, stays, stays in a hotel, you know? Yeah, some people do bring RVs, and, you know, I just, I want to see something for the future generations of this, you know? I'm, I'm young, and I want to see everybody, you know, else who's young like me, my friends, and, you know, other car guys, like it was said earlier. I want to see them have something to look forward to in Lompoc, you know? So, I mean, this, this is just, needs to move forward, because I don't want, I don't want to see anybody scraping their little brother, their little sister off of pools, like I almost had to do to myself, you know? So this is something for, you know, future generations who will look back at this day and just, you know, thank us for everything we've done, and, you know, keep pulling forward. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Gilbert Navarro, Gizgas. I'm for the motorsports park, and I'll tell you why. I happen to live not up on the hill over there, and I don't live on the hill over here, but I do live on the hill over here, and I own my house, and I pay taxes. But we have a racetrack right outside my door, and every day I have motorcycles go up and down from A all the way up the hill, and I have cars come back down the hill all the way, and all the way back down. This is every day. Now, the police are well aware. I don't blame the police. I have this real nice machine right outside my window that's a radar machine, and it came to my house at 3:00 in the morning recently. I know this because I sleep with my window open, because I love Lompoc. Now, so the gentleman was out there, a police gentleman was out there hooking this thing up, this radar machine, 3:00 in the morning. And I'll tell you why. Because all of my neighbors asked for it, so we can get these racers off of my street around the corner, up and down. I don't blame the police at all. I blame that there isn't a place for these gentlemen, or these women even, on motorcycles to race in a safe venue, in an environment. Get them off the streets, for God's sakes. Now, those that know me, I am a member of the Lompoc Parks, Recs and Pool Foundation. Been with them since the very beginning. Why? Because there's a group of people, a lot of people, that want a lot of things in Lompoc, but in order to get them, you have to come into the groups and, you know, do what we're doing here. Anyway, when that motorsports parks came into my situation years ago is because we had lost quite a few young men racing on our streets. I know one of them. I'm for the motorsport park, and I'm against the racing on Lompoc streets.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. I'd like to start. Okay. If no one wants to do anything, I would like to make a motion. My motion is, I'd like to instruct staff to complete Phase 1 and not amend the MOU to extend the Lompoc Parks, Pool and Rec Foundation line of credit to include costs for the NEPA and ALP. So my, again, my motion is to instruct staff to complete Phase 1, but not to amend the MOU that would extend a line of credit for the NEPA and the ALP. And that's my motion. I'll need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just got one thing, people talking about racetracks and such, and I don't know how many in this room knows it, but the Campbell Ranch used to have, on the way on 246, used to be a racetrack around the Campbell Ranch. And then also, the Santa Maria Fair Park had one, that knows they didn't do Loppy racing. And the Presbyterian Church up there was a radio grounds and a racetrack. So there's been racetracks, but every one of them moved when the houses started to get built. And so I think there is a problem. I don't think anybody, like you say, is against the park itself. It's a location, it's a location, location, but it don't make any difference what it is. If you're building anything, you always have a location problem. My concern when I first started there was that it was in the river bottom. And I've seen a lot of things happen over the years in the river bottom that was, they were being denied of, and you had, we used to, in the '40s and '50s, we ran diesel tractors up and down the river, from the river all the way past Lompoc, to allow the water to flow. Then the environmental community come in and shut it all down. So that's, I, one of the things I seen was coming down the road is, I thought that we were going to have a real good El Nino, and if we did, we'd had a flood that washed out most of the racetrack.
Councilmember Mosby.
So your, your motion is to, again, can you?
Okay. My motion is to instruct staff to complete Phase 1. We're currently in the middle of Phase 1, but not to amend the MOU that would extend a line of credit, which would include costs for the NEPA and the airport location plan. So complete Phase 1, but not amend the MOU that would extend a line of credit to the foundation to move forward with NEPA and ALP.
Okay, what, what about modification from what they've found out earlier today with the grant being able to pay more than 50%?
Well, let's ask the city attorney and city manager. How, how will this affect our, if this passes, how will this affect our commitment to the state grant? I, I believe that this motion would limit our liability. We complete Phase 1, so we would be able to be reimbursed for our portion of Phase 1, if we complete Phase 1.
I'm going to answer that based on the understanding of the current situation. The current situation is the city is paying out of pocket. So I'm saying this not because I'm for or against anything, just to make sure that I'm clear, that I understand what your motion is, or, yeah, what the motion is. The current situation is the city's paying out of pocket the expenses for the EIR, for the environmental analysis. I'm understanding your motion to be, we'll continue to do that, and when the EIR is ready to be certified, the foundation will have to come up with the money to cover that share, the foundation's share. And with that certification, maybe we'll get reimbursement or not, because we still have the NEPA that has to be done. And when you said just a minute ago, "Don't extend the line of credit for the NEPA," meaning the city will also pay the NEPA cost to have that done so that we can all, all of Phase 1 done?
No, that is not my, my motion. Okay.
I believe the motion is to, I'm just going to paraphrase and correct me if I'm wrong, but that you're suggesting we not amend the MOU and that the foundation has to come up with the money now for NEPA and the ALP.
And they'd have to come up with their portion that we have extended for Phase 1 before we certify the EIR. That was the agreement in the current MOU. Is that correct?
That's the agreement in the current MOU.
Right. And if we're not, if we're not modifying the current MOU, if...
That still stands.
That still stands.
As your motion is proposed.
Again, again, for discussion, you have other options that allow for funding of the grants to come in to make up that portion of the MOU. So there's grant funds out there that wouldn't, that would reduce the obligation to the city because the, the state funds would come in offset. I believe the original MOU was the 50-50, right?
The original MOU is to split the Sequin costs after the drag strip portion is taken out.
Right, so again, for discussion, it seems like there are still other options out there that would reduce the exposure to the city by allowing 25% more to come in from the grant, or 23% more coming in of grant funds, of state grant funds. So it seems, you know, I understand moving forward with, with what you're doing, but you could reduce the potential liabilities by assuming more grant with the knowledge that you guys acquired today or the last couple of days, which if we had known originally, I believe we probably would have had in the MOU in the first place. So along with the modifications, you realize that there's others, the staff time that's out there can be billed differently, if I'm correct. That was new knowledge that you wanted to move forward. So again, you would have reimbursement of, if you did modify the MOU, you would have reimbursements that would be leaving on the table, that if we modified the MOU, we could pick up extra grant funds. So it seems like we're missing out on something with the city monies, it'd lower the risk factor to the city if you moved in a modification of the MOU.
At this point, I am trying to limit the risk to the, to the city at our current liability. That's what I'm trying to do.
But I, I understand, I appreciate your, your decision, your suggestion here, but actually, we could actually reduce it more if we did modify the MOU by bringing in the, another 25% with fund, with the modification of the MOU.
That is assuming that the foundation has the ability to raise these funds to reimburse the city, the additional funds that we would put forward for the NEPA. That's the additional $140,000 that we're putting forward.
Well, the NEPA can be grant funded, correct?
The NEPA can be grant funded. What you're suggesting, though, is that that's a risk.
I'm suggesting it is a risk, yes. And I want...
And what, what percentage of the NEPA can be grant funded?
All but the drag strip portion.
All but how many dollars?
The drag strip, I mean, I'm sorry, NEPA is $65,000, and the portion that would be attributed to the drag strip would be $1,690.
So that the grant would fund all but $1,900? So I mean, that's, that's, what risk is that to the city if, if you have the NEPA funded by the grant?
The risk comes into place if we don't finish Phase 1.
Right, so even if we...
And I'm saying, this motion instructs city staff to complete Phase 1, so we eliminate that risk to the city.
Which, which risk?
That we don't get reimbursed for the money, that we don't, that we don't complete Phase 1. So if we don't complete Phase 1, we are obligated for everything that the grant would have been paying for during Phase 1. We must complete Phase 1 to get reimbursed anything.
Right, and now, and I think there's some numbers involved here that are important to discuss. If you, if you go as the current MOU, 50% of it of, of the 235, which is what, 100, plus the, the other portion was 116,000. plus the other portion was 116,000. If you went through with the, a modification of the MOU, taking three quarters of grant funds, or a little bit less than three quarters of the grant funds, what would be the increased risk financially if, if you did it, modifying the MOU, was shifting the grant funds to three quarter, a little less than three quarter, and with the NEPA involved? Would it be the same dollar amount or a little bit less?
If, okay, so, right now, the foundation portion of SEQA would be 118,793. If, if you're suggesting that we shift Phase Two grant funding to Phase One to cover all of SEQA and NEPA except for the drag strip portion?
Right.
Then we're talking about 100... The drag strip portion would be, of those two, would be 7,690, and the rest would be attributable to the grant.
So, what would be the risk, then? It seems to me like you reduce the risk significantly if you, if you modify the MOU to the city, don't you? Financial risk? Isn't there a significant reduction?
If we complete Phase One. If we don't complete Phase One, we're continuing to do more work that increases a risk. So, it's, it's all about whether or not Phase One can be completed.
And, but likewise, if Phase One's not completed, you have the risk. If you're, you're getting 50%, if you do the other way, the grant funds cover it. So, you're, you reduce it significantly by getting to Phase One.
And our chances of completing Phase One are handicapped if we don't start immediately. To start immediately, we need to tap funds that are available immediately. Immediately, there are not funds available. I don't know how much additional funding is available for the foundation.
Oh, wait. We have the money to complete Phase One. Exactly. We, I mean, we're in the middle of Phase One right now. We have that money.
I'm, I'm sensing that perhaps there's some confusion on the parameters of Phase One. You're talking about the SEQA portion of Phase One.
That we're currently involved in, yes.
Right. And what we've become aware of is that the Phase One is all the environmental. We thought that was SEQA only. Now, we've come to know it's SEQA and the NEPA. So, just for clarification, if, if I understand what you're inferring by your additional comments, it's, it sounds like what you're asking us to do is to complete the SEQA and not proceed with the NEPA, or...
That is exactly what I said. And not extend for the NEPA. I mean, yes, just complete SEQA.
Okay.
Of Phase One that we're currently involved in.
Then I think you need to go back to your original question to the city attorney.
I'm not sure that completing only the California Environmental and Quality Act process will be sufficient for the state grant to feel we completed all of the environmental that's necessary to be completed. In order to do that, we have to finish, to be sure, we need to finish the NEPA analysis as well. To finish the NEPA analysis, we need to do the ALP, the land, the airport land plan. We have to do that in order to complete the NEPA. So, if I'm understanding what's being, what the motion would then say is, do SEQA, leave the fact that the foundation has to come up with their share of the SEQA process before certification, but as to the NEPA and the, as to the NEPA process, we're going to have still the 50/50 split, meaning the foundation's going to come up with 50% of that, and the grant's going to pay for the other 50%. And as to the plan, that can't be paid for by the grant. So, 100% of that will have to be paid for by the foundation, based on the not line of credit. And I don't think the foundation is in a position to be able to pay that. And if it's not, then we aren't going to complete the SEQA, the NEPA, or the ALP.
I think, as we progress with this, I think if we could slow down and see what the dollar amount cost is by doing it this way, and, again, for discussion, I know there's a motion and a second, but before we take a vote, if we could finalize the dollar number that we're talking about by doing it this way versus the way that you have put on the table with using the grant funds to the maximum, using Phase Two to cover Phase One, what are the dollars of...
Okay. So, if, if we continue to have the foundation pay 50% of SEQA and NEPA and the ALP, which is being proposed, the amount due from the foundation is $270,000, $27680. $270,680.
Just for correction, you said the foundation would also pay only 50% of the ALP?
No. It's 100%.
100% of the ALP.
Correct. 100% of the ALP, 100, what is being, the motion is 100% of the ALP, 100% of NEPA, and 50% of the EIR plus the drag strip portion. And that's $270,680.
Okay. And the other option that we have is if we went with a modification of the MOU where you had, can you give me the calculation of that? What...
Certainly. If, if we modified the MOU to allow the grant funding that the state has said we can move, then the foundation would need to pay 100% of the ALP, which is 70, estimated at this point, at 75,000. And the portion that is attributed to the drag strip, which is 6,000 for SEQA, 1,690 for NEPA, so 7,690 plus 75. I hope somebody's tracking this. So, that's what that is.
And the grant funds would cover...
The remainder.
And the grant funds would cover the remainder, so...
And there is one other factor, and that is the 26, or 28, or 30, the magic calculator match. That still has to be determined, and that should be covered predominantly, I think. We need to make sure that that is covered.
And so, and approximately, can you give me, just call it 30%. Can you give me approximate at 30%?
Let's just say 100,000. Right, right now, at 26%, it would be 98,289. Now, this is just an estimate for our calculating purposes, rounded up a little because I was, I am under the impression, and we have learned that that figure is a little low. So, if we set 100,000, just for math, so there's 175,000 plus the 7,690.
And again, we're approximating because we've had the ALP vary from 5,000 to 85,000.
That's correct.
And, so basically...
So, that's 183,000 about, which is less than 270.
So, it would put the, the city at a significant less risk if we went the, the direction with the new news that you've found out today? By the numbers, by the numbers, I mean, I guess we could ask the city attorney if that 270 is less than, is more than 175,000. I mean, 270 is more than 175...
I'm a lawyer, not a mathematician.
I got you. You know what I'm saying. It seems to me that we reduce the risk by using the knowledge you learned today. You risk the risk. The difference is that we have to, and again, as the city attorney says, we do risk if we don't do the NEPA and we don't do the ALP of the state going and said, "You didn't do your due diligence." And then for, the grant funding wouldn't cover anything. Is that...
That's one of the risks that you're facing.
So, we actually increase the risk a lot by not doing the NEPA or the ALP even more, if we continue on?
We, we are, we're putting more money in, more city money into it. And I, I am not confident that the foundation can raise this additional money. So, I want to cut our losses at this point. I want us to complete the SEQA portion of Phase One. This is my motion, to complete the SEQA portion of Phase One and not modify the MOU. That was my motion, and I have a second on it, so I'm going to call it a question.
The city attorney has something to add?
I'm sorry, mayor. I put the letter because you said you wanted to cut the city's losses. The city has used no grant money to this point. The clearest way to cut the city's losses is for the city to not spend any more money. The only way to not spend any more money is to stop the whole project, right now. If you, if you wanted to go forward with, if you didn't want to do that, the next step, which I'm hearing you say, is you want to do what you can do to make sure that the money the city already spent is going to be repaid by the grant, and any future money that's going to be spent is going to be paid by the grant. In order to do that, we have to finish the environmental analysis, both SEQA and NEPA. So, the options you have, as I'm seeing it, is leave the MOU in the state that it's in, and hope that the foundation will be able to pay for the NEPA, for the 50% of the NEPA, and for all of the ALP as we're incurring that debt. And then we'll finish the environmental, and the grant money will pay for what the city puts out of pocket. Or to amend the MOU to keep the SEQA responsibility payments for the foundation to pay us when the, before the document, the SEQA is, yeah, the EIR is certified, and for the city to front the money for the ALP and the, and NEPA, so it gets done, and then have the foundation pay us back at some point in the future. I don't know what that would be. That's what I see as the options. I'm not suggesting any options, just saying that's what I see as the options.
Okay. So...
The only other option that I'm thinking is if there is a date certain that you would say you wanted this funding very, very quickly, and it was not available, then that would also end it.
Well, we've, we further exposed the city to additional money at that point.
If the city puts the money up, but you're saying you're not in favor of that.
I'm not in favor of the city putting any more money forward, with line of credit or whatever. So, okay, so, the motion as it stands would still, would make the city liable for additional funding. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. The motion as it stands would increase the city's cost. If you're asking us to continue with SEQA, we will have additional costs. And we won't complete Phase One in a good faith effort if we haven't addressed NEPA.
What is our exposure at this point if we do nothing? If we stop the project?
So, we've paid 100 and, I think we've paid 123,000. We've paid 178,000, and the...
Foundation gave us 55, so we have a 23, 123,000 exposure at this point.
Approximately. That's included.
Plus what?
I was merely checking. I knew we had some billings outstanding, but she had included that in her totals.
178,267 with the current invoice that is forthcoming. And then the foundation has paid 55,762. So, we can deduct that from the total.
Okay. So, if I amend my motion to stop, just stop the project right now, we'd be exposed for 123,000. Is that correct? I believe it is 123,000. And, and according to the MOU, the foundation is responsible for paying that back to us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm going to need a new second on this. My motion is...
You're withdrawing?
Withdrawing the first motion.
And the second is withdrawing also?
Yeah. Okay. And I'm making the motion to, to stop the project at this time and cut our losses, and I believe the foundation, in theory, is responsible for paying back the city that 123,000. That's my motion, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Let's vote.
I've got...
Go ahead.
In the MOU, is, are there any obligations to the city to, and noticing and such to do something like this? Or is there anything that puts the city at risk, violating our, the due diligence to...
I honestly, I don't remember what the MOU said in terms of the city being able to, at its own discretion, terminate the project. I don't remember off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I do know that, that it was certain that if this, if it didn't go forward, that the foundation, for, for any reason, that the foundation had to pay back the money. And you're not terminating the MOU. What you're doing is stopping the EIR process, you're stopping the bleeding. So, that seems to me to be a good faith reason for the city to want to stop the bleeding because they're decided the foundation isn't going to be able to pay the money. Then it becomes an argument between the city and the foundation whether they're going to pay you.
Okay. Does everyone understand the motion? Okay, let's vote. And that passes 3-2. Thank you. Okay, city clerk, written communications.
There is a letter that was delivered to me at the podium from somebody in the, in the audience. It was an email received from a private citizen in favor of the project.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, oral communications. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes. Okay. The meeting has not been adjourned yet, so let's try to be quiet.
Couple of things that I noticed here. The term taxpayer's money was used quite a bit. The grant is a, from the state off-highway vehicle park funds. If you have an off-road vehicle, you buy a green sticker or a red sticker, and that's the, money goes into the state fund. 90% of that is used to build off-highway vehicle parks and stuff because some of us were willing to tax ourselves to get a benefit. Mayor Lingle, I noticed in the paper, at your town hall meeting, you had some people there discussing street racing and that. With your action tonight, I sure hope you come in in a couple of weeks with a plan of what you're going to do when all hell breaks loose again. And economic event, when Riverbed was open, we have an off-highway vehicle park. We had three very successful motorcycle businesses here. Today, you have really none, not any of them selling bikes, a couple of repair shops, all you have. So, you talk economic development, you talk about tourism. I think you kind of failed tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Terry Hammond, Lompoc. I want to address something that was, about this taxpayer money. I'm not in here to debate who pays what, what's paid, but in 2006, the Parks Department in California did a survey, telephone survey, to determine how much gas, purchase of gas was attributed to off-road riding. And it was determined that, in some formula, that we all pay for these off-way, off-highway parks, because there's no exact calculation. It was just based on the survey that so many people purchase gas, they use it in their vehicles when they go off-highway. Some, there's probably a, a factor in there that does not exactly address that. Now... Now, I wanted to compliment the motorsports park. It seems odd that I would do this, but they have a fantastic website, Facebook page. And it was entertaining to watch their, I mean, how they used that. And it was, I mean, these people are very resourceful, and I appreciate their resourcefulness. But here's the problem. We need to all live together, and we cannot have this contentiousness where a park is going to be disturbing to many, many people in this, in this community. Now, if there's drag racing on the streets, you gotta just get the people out there, you get the police out there, and then, you know what? The other thing is, we all have a phone. I know how to use a phone to call the police. There's no problem doing that. But anyway, I think you made the right decision, the majority of the night. And I, but I would like to see this park situation moved on in an appropriate area because I'd like to see some drag racing.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, city council again. I was just embarrassed to see that you just, John Johnson, hi, city. Very embarrassed that you just wasted the city's $125,000, $160,000, $180,000. I've been in probably at least 30 grants with the state and the government, and the state always pays for off-road parks, always. They've never reneged from any of those. And then I'd like to say something about Lompoc police officers and the one, can't remember, he's a detective, I think. You know, Lompoc police, what they do is they'll arrest the guy, and that's all they can do. It took all of you guys 10 minutes to hash over the same thing, the same amount of dollars for the last 15 minutes we've been talking about. You've said these numbers 20 times, you still don't know what you're talking about. So you just lost, because the Parks Foundation most likely won't pay you back. I'm just saying, I don't know. They'll just say, oh, we'll go bankrupt. You had $160,000, $200,000 from the state they would have given you. I don't understand that. So a police officer arrests a person, the judge lets him go eight hours later, the police arrests him the next day, the judge lets him go. The detective, I had a truck ripped off, and a total loss. The kid almost murdered two people in their house in King City. The police arrest him, they let him out. The police arrested him, they let him out. So if he wanted to leave town, he can, but the off-road park not having it, or even the option, was, I think it, we should have went for the off-road park, but it was a disgrace to see you turn down, lose $120,000. But you did it with Lompoc Ford, I think, too. We donated money to Lompoc Ford, and then they tore that down. But it seems to be a consistent thing to give people money and then let it go, and you just wash your hands. I don't understand that mentality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela, local resident. One thing I want to say in all of this discussion was the total disregard for the people, the majority of the people who are opposed to this and the quality of life here. So your vote to not let this go forward at this location was the right thing to do for the majority of the people in the town. So, like I said, nobody's been against the motorsports park, just the location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Alexon, Lompoc residents. Few things that trouble me is all these people coming forward saying, "Right park, wrong location." Where's their solution? They don't have one. All these people that say it's going to ruin their quality of life for the majority of the people in Lompoc, I beg to differ. Did they ever research or get their facts straight on the type of vehicles that were going to be allowed at the motorsports park? No. They were not going to be allowed Formula One race cars. They were going to be the street cars that you are driving on, next to you, on the streets of Lompoc. They were no louder than the vehicles that you are driving next to, up and down H Street, up and down Central. They didn't do their research, and y'all bought into it. Because you're scared, scared of change. This town needs change, and y'all just flushed it down the toilet. And that really saddens me, really saddens me.
Okay, thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. Kind of shocking that you just throw away the money, but it's a trend for at least two of you there, and now a third. It's funny that when it fits your political allies, you can give away a duplex and give it a valuation of zero. You can give away a theater and say it's a negative net value to the city. But one another agency had it, namely LH CDC, Mr. Lingle. You said it was a waste of taxpayer money. You need to learn that a waste is a waste is a waste is a waste, and not it only be when it benefits your political allies. It will come out in the next election, how things work. And, you know, you defund an agency in closed session under the guise of a real estate transaction, and then you create a circus of how it was a bad agency, which there was a lot of bad, but there was a lot of backdoor politics that'll soon come out as well. And so if something doesn't stand out in its own merit, just say it doesn't stand out in its own merit. But don't invent reasons and throw away the baby with the bathwater for political purposes, not at the cost of the city. There were some valid complaints from residents, don't get me wrong. There were some valid complaints, but there were also a lot of people, and as you can look to the audience now, the ones that are from Lompoc are still here, and the ones that are not, on the coordinated effort to stop it, are gone. And these are the people that are going to remember and vote next election. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this was a difficult decision. Michael Donahue. It's true, I don't live in the city of Lompoc, but I want what is best for the city. The motorsports thing is cool, but if you just looked, you look at the state of California, you look at where we're at, and this is a pristine valley. There's more that we can do to bring economic vitality to this community. The damage that this would do, you guys already weighed the facts. I think you've made a sober decision, I know it's disappointing. There were too many contingencies, there were too many things that could go wrong. And it just, I think it's the right thing to do to cut your losses while you can. And apparently, the foundation is, has already agreed to pay those expenses as well. So if they're good on their word, they'll do that. And maybe this thing can be moved, maybe you can find a place where it will work. There's a lot of, you guys mentioned Vandenberg, there's a lot of great land. This thing is so vast, and in fact, there's a guy named Jim Icahn. If you don't know him, you want to meet him. Because Vandenberg, the federal lands are looking for opportunities to develop all kinds of things, because there's a mandate to do that. So I would, you guys could probably do something very inexpensively to explore that. Jim Icahn, I'd be happy to call him. He's dealing with issues right now at the golf course. But they're looking for partners to do stuff on Vandenberg Air Force Base. So I think that that could be a good thing. Hey, if we can listen, if they can put it out there, it's remote, it doesn't do anybody harm, and it satisfies some of the requirements. So I thank you for your courageous decision tonight.
Thank you.
I'm Will Fassel. Certainly, there's very, you know, strong and divergent opinions on this matter. I want to credit the board for taking a look at the, or the board, the council, for taking a look at the relative liability, the upside, the downside, and looking at the potential risk and taking action tonight to limit that risk. There's all kinds of different opinions, there's internal dynamics that go on and all kinds of things. There's a lot of hard work people put into trying to propose this effort. But I do believe it is the right decision. I live up on the mesa, and the soccer field off the end of H Street is maybe, I'm going to say about a mile away. And the sound of kids cheering when they score a goal is a really good thing. It's a pleasant sound, and it's neat to see them have a good time, okay? The fact that I can hear them a mile away is just amazing to me, and that's the acoustics and the environment and the topography of the area. And the sound transmission is greater here than in five other locations in different parts of this country that I've seen. And so if anyone thinks that the noise would not be an issue, there's something wrong because you're just not acknowledging fact. I want to also bring up that, I was at a airport meeting in this room, I don't know, back late last year. And so there were people from the public, I was here. There were people voicing concerns on this project. There was a gentleman in the back of the room who was highly agitated and started flipping the lights to clear the building. And I now know the name associated with the person. I think that was you, Councilman Mosby, okay? It was you, okay, I know, okay. So I just want to just say that there's some certain degree of public respect and regard that I believe is unbecoming of a public official, and I don't appreciate that, okay? So I thank you for making the hard decisions that you made.
Sure, I need you to wrap it up now. Okay, thank you.
Michelle Toniotzini. I just have a couple of questions because I'm not sure if the project is killed in its entirety or not, and I'm sure I'll get the answers later. But I know in working with the Kids' Motor Fun Park that I was able to request advancements of funds so we didn't have to take funds out of. So I'm not really sure why the application for advancement of funds to pay for the things that needed to be paid for, why that wasn't done. Because in my understanding of how the grant was working, no city funds were going to be needed to be used between what the motorsport park was going to give and the advancement of funds for the grant. So I guess I'm just with question, and they'll be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring you back to the council. Let's see, we have a paper here. Council requests, comments, meeting reports. Start with Councilmember Mosby.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
That's Rahamdal.
Just one thing, Channel 12 had a very good, interesting tour of Lompoc and what was going on in the Lompoc Valley this weekend, from wine to the race on this weekend for cancer. So I think it was a very good one and very positive about what Lompoc has going forward to the people in Lompoc.
Okay. And I've attended many meetings, but none at city expense, so I have nothing to report also. And with that, this meeting is adjourned to the Lompoc City Council meeting, joint meeting with the Airport Commission at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, May 17, 2016, right here at City Council Chambers. Good night.